All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order. First item on the agenda are minutes, so can I have a motion on minutes?
Approve, motion to approve the minutes from the November 13th meeting. Second.
Okay. Any discussion, omissions, corrections?
My name is Susan G.
Yeah, I saw that too. I figured I'd let you handle that one. Other than the correction of the capitalization of Amy's name, any other?
No.
So, all in favor? All right. Next is chairman's report, just very quick report. Past few meetings, we've sort of pride ourselves on being very efficient and having meetings and actually before nine o'clock. I don't think that that's going to happen tonight.
True.
We have a very full agenda and obviously as we get into discussions on budget and full discussions on it, they tend to go long. The other item that I have, I don't know if this is common knowledge, but the facility manager Greg Lefner has resigned. He's going to be taking a position over at the Asmit Valley Votec for it, so his date is December 31st. So that also means why we have an agenda item about a letter to the town administrator on the facility manager position. That's all I have. Bob?
Okay. And I'll try to be brief. Usually I'm not in this section, but I did want to share with the school committee that I finished my retail course, I finished the actual coursework, and the culminating activity was to develop a district SEI Sheltered English Instruction Implementation Plan. I've shared a copy of what I put together, and it is judicially mandated that we provide this professional development, but no, it really is really strong teaching strategies, it makes sense. So, we're going to be integrating it in this, I explained exactly how we're going to integrate the Sheltered English Instruction into our professional development activities over the course of the next couple of years. I just wanted to share it with everybody that it is a really important initiative and that we will be doing it. Also, I attended the Fall Sports Awards, and so we had some excellent students who, you know, it was really nice to see all the good work that they've done and how well our sports teams have done, so it was awesome. And it was a great event. That's all I have.
Okay. Next is a student representative report, so Janelle and Connor.
Good evening.
Good.
So, it's pretty quiet at the high school, nothing much going on. We had a pretty loud speaker week last week, so everyone's kind of calming down from that. WAVM is in a full sprint for the telethon that's next week, eight days away, so everyone's ramping up for that. We got all the acts booked, and it should be a really good time.
Connor, if anybody has any items to donate, sort of last minute here, what should they do?
Yeah, they can drop them by the station, which is in the high school, and you can call 978-897-5213, that's the phone number for WAVM, and you can talk to Mr. Meneasen or anyone who's there and get it all set up.
Okay.
As Dr. Durr already said, the Fall Sports Banquet was last night. The winter sports have started, they started on Monday, teams were decided on Tuesday, and the first rehearsal for Bye Bye Birdie was today, it was a read-through, and there will be a blood drive on December 8th at Maynard High School for the Red Cross.
Any questions?
A comment. I had the opportunity to come to Powderpuff. Here on Julie, who's the student that's leading us in our family.
What's Powderpuff?
Powderpuff Football is a fundraiser where the girls play five football, being coached and cheered on by the boys. So, it was a round robin tournament, all four classes were represented. Julie's senior class, they got cold really bad. And your commentary from the press box was hilarious.
Thank you.
But it was a phenomenal event, and it was well attended and supported, lots of kids, lots of families, so I was really pleased with how well it was organized and everything else, so.
Yeah. It was a good night.
It was. Cold.
Yeah, it was cold. All right. I gotta get back to babysitting, I'm doing some NHS fundraiser, something over there, something in the auditorium tonight, so. All right, have a good evening.
Thank you, guys.
Next on the agenda are citizens' comments. Is there anyone with comments tonight? Going once, twice? All right. Next is finance committee discussion with Bob McCarthy. And, Bob, I'm not sure how we want to do this or how you want to do it, but do you want to have any comments ahead of time, or do you just want to get into questions that we have, or?
Yeah, questions is fine. I did spend a little while doing some back and forth correspondence with both you and Amy and others I copied as well. I assume, maybe it makes more sense, there were some questions from previous discussions about both capital and about free cash, so I'll lay them out.
Did you want to take a step closer to the microphone, too? You can sit at the front there, so Lydia doesn't have to move her. I'm just thinking that your voice might not be that far back.
Sure.
Oh, I didn't mean to make you uncomfortable.
No, I don't care. Comment about all his jokes from me, by the way.
My great sense of humor.
He never shows it at the house. I have to go to sporting events to actually hear it.
When I talked to Mary Ellen in the stands, she said exactly the same thing.
Teenage.
Yeah, you said it last night, they just mumble. So, anyway.
Well, I guess maybe one thing you could use is to share our conversation about free cash. So, one question I had is, you know, when I look at our free cash numbers, I guess this year we've been certified for 1.8 million, I have no idea whether is that a lot, is that a little, are we undershooting, overshooting? Because one concern I've had is that, you know, the amount of free cash that we wind up with at the end of every year and what our targets are for where we want to be has a possibility of impacting our operating budgets. And I want to balance smart investments and good money management with as robust operating budgets as we can get, because, you know, that's what we need for education. But I don't want to do that at the expense of financial health of the town, so do you want to maybe just say a little bit about?
Sure.
What we're fond of about?
Yeah, absolutely. First of all, I want to say that a number of the reports that I got and some that I forwarded come from the town accountant, Mike Guzzo, who's been providing us a lot of great data that we haven't had in the past. One of the things he sent to me today was a summary of the capital and the breakdown of where it came from, not capital, the free cash, from FY 2012, which was 2.9 million, which, so you're not alone saying, wow, that seems awful, like an awful lot, why do we have it? So, I want to tell you that, first of all, he's a wealth of information, and a lot of this stuff is available through him, and some of it gets into town reports, which now get posted on the website, which just makes it a whole lot more accessible if we actually read it, which I'm trying to do a little bit more than I used to. The other comment I want to make is that we haven't really had a policy, any official policy or a specific target about free cash. There are guidelines that the DOR puts out and Department of Local Services, I think it is, DLS, and they talk about that it's, first of all, healthy to have free cash, but it's not like you have a budget for it. You know, free cash is, in fact, leftover, unspent money or unexpected returns. If you have auctions for property like we've had, you might have a lot of that kind of money in one year and almost none the next. And free cash can be negative. One of the funny things that Mike said is that we seem to have, you know, basically hit the record in Massachusetts for seven years in a row of negative free cash, which isn't necessarily what you want to be known for, and that happened in the 90s. So, I would argue that we haven't really been as consistent as we need to be, and where it comes from is how we budget and how we estimate local revenue or nonrecurring revenue, that sort of thing. And they are estimates, so by definition, they're volatile. So, I would liken a little bit, especially for your group, as the sped funding is that we have to estimate where we're going to be, and we don't get reimbursed the following year, so that's a lot like the motor vehicle excise taxes, which fluctuate a lot, but they usually should come in where you have, you know, 150,000 to 250,000, seems like a lot. So, add three or four other elements like that together, and you can get to 2 million pretty easily. So, the point here is that if you go negative, you get penalized, you have to put aside more money to reserve because the state says, ah, you're not really estimating very well, and that money isn't available to you till the next year, so that might be a deficit in the operating budget, for instance. So, you want to be near it, or hopefully more than that, but how much is healthy? And I was surprised to find out that the DOR recommends 3% to 5% of your annual budget. So, in FY 14, we were 35 million, so 3% to 5% is one to almost, you know, 2 million, so 1.75, I believe, which means this year, our free cash at 1.8 million is about on the target that they would recommend that is healthy, and it keeps you in a good bond rating status and that sort of thing. So, I'm not saying it's simple, I'm not saying that, you know, we know what to do exactly with that once we do have it, but we're certainly not cutting it so close that we're in danger of, you know, reducing our bond rating status or being penalized the next following year to have to reserve more money, which is kind of what happened in 2012. So, I only got that information late last night. Mike Guzzo was really working pretty hard to say, well, what about that big nut, the 2.9 million? So, I will forward that to you as well, for you to look at, but the bottom line is these are either state funds that we can't predict very well, there are, you know, a shortfall or an extra amount of taxes compared to our estimates, those kinds of things. There's insurance involved in this, there are a lot of little items, so it's really how close we're getting to budgeting near and being accurate about our estimates that, you know, dictates how much free cash we end up with. Now, for everybody else, we talked about this as well. The other thing that DOR says is that because it's nonrecurring and variable even more than what taxes we bring in, it can't be, first of all, it can't be used until certified and can't be used for current fiscal year funding on operating budget. Not that once it's certified, you can't use it for that purpose, but it's highly discouraged because what happens if you use it to fund operating budget and then next year it dries up or goes negative? So, it's typically viewed that it's better to use it for either capital expenses or other nonrecurring expenses or put into other reserves. So, that's their guidance, and we're actually having some discussion at the finance committee to see if there's a way that we can potentially aim some portion, not a lot, because again, it could be, Mike thinks it's going to be a lot less next year than the 1.8 million, for instance. So, 100,000 of it could go to a number of different things, either reserves, like you've seen us put in in the last couple of years, stabilization, either capital or the general fund stabilization, or it could go to some other things that we think about that could be slowly getting us into a better position for our tax rate, our split tax rate, there's a bunch of ideas like that. So, I don't know if that gets to most or any of the questions, but that's kind of...
How does the state feel about recurring capital costs? I'm thinking of more like IT.
Yeah. So, if they're still volatile, it all depends, you're still, you're trying to, with those, obviously target and estimate a little bit more closely than some others, perhaps.
I mean, it's obviously at a certain point that you have to replace obsolete machines with current ones and stuff, and you should do that on a regular basis, and there should be a plan of, okay, we're going to do 20% of the machines or something along those lines.
So, now you're getting into a capital plan with a good forecast.
Or a thing, but some years you might say, well, money's tight, we're not going to do it this year, we're going to delay it, type of thing, but it's sort of a thing where if you do have free cash that you seem to be, maybe you can't predict exactly how much you're going to have all the time, but at least some aspect of that that you could maybe put into a capital plan on that, but it's more of a recurring cost.
So, if it's predictable, say like cruisers are needed every three years, is that the kind of thing you're talking about?
Yeah, or I'm saying more computers, but yeah, cruisers would be another example.
So, I would say that free cash can be used that way, but, and I think that Andrew Scribner came in front of you and talked about something that's a little bit more, you know, directed and proactively looking at a way to fund those kinds of things, because, I mean, if we had nine years in a row of negative free cash, and we are thinking that that and planning for that to be a way to fund our cruisers, obviously, you know, that's not great planning. So, I think there, it's not the same issue, but it's certainly related to a good forecast in your capital expenditures, especially ones you can predict, and having a foregoing plan for how to fund that, but not from free cash per se. That's my two cents. Now, that may seem counterintuitive in that an awful lot of time we do some of our capital expenditures for that, but I would argue that's making up for past lack of planning when we're behind the eight ball in terms of maintenance, for instance. So, we're trying to get ahead of that.
We would do, rather than expending, let's say, calling computers or the infrastructure of the capital expenses, funding it out of free cash, we would be funding the capital stabilization account.
Bingo.
And we would be funding then those expenses more out of the capitalization.
And then there would be more of a plan then of more rigorously deciding what's the priority for the capital planning in the future, and then funding that priority, not just seeing what do we use this for, I don't think. And I don't think anybody's ever done that, but you could probably fault the town in general for sometimes not having an inclusive enough discussion about how to fund some of these things, and I think the capital planning that is going on in town hall now, instead of a volunteer capital planning committee, is moving toward being a lot more, a lot more rigorous about how to choose priorities and make it transparent and get people's input on what those priorities should be as we go forward.
And how does that work for that process to get the schools input? Because last I checked, when I was on the board, it was just, it was made up of town employees and perhaps a select one, I don't exactly recall, but I don't remember the, so it seems like if Kevin or Andrew are on that committee to spend or recommend spending on a capital stabilization, almost every department's represented except the schools.
Great question, and I don't have the answer.
I wasn't sure if you could flush that out more.
I'm not certain, and, go ahead, yeah, you may know.
If we got a capital plan, I don't know if we're talking about the same thing, I represent the school department in the capital planning committee, in fact, we have a meeting Monday morning to review the current input to try to stop merit rises on it.
And that's the fund that we have about 4 million, we've already put about 4 million in sort of earmarks for a fire station, but it's if we're going to keep funding it, so to speak.
Right, there's a number of items, I'll say, in, we have not, we, the school department has not developed and submitted hardware input, in other words, a computer replacement plan, that would have to be fed into it. We do have foul playground as an item in the capital plan, we do have a pickup truck as a capital item which we'll take up because we govern, and it's a kind of iterative process, and that's what Andrew talked about some number of meetings ago, that process.
So, he presented the whole process and a 10-year to 20-year plan, right, about where he's looking to do more funding as pay-as-you-go?
Where funding would come from, I'd raise some eyebrows. So, yeah, that process is, it's relatively, there is a process, a lot. The majority of the capital items currently in that plan for the school department actually came from the facility manager, okay, looking out, I'll say, five years for, you know, major equipment replacement and things like that, so those, everything isn't in there, but a lot of that is already in there for '16, '17, '18, '19. That's going to have to be, you know, revised.
So, just to tie in, just one comment I have overall, and this is really from seeing both sides of the process for a number of years now, is I feel that, a concern I have is seeing the operating budgets get squeezed as now we seem to be uber-focused on the capital needs or making a capital plan. So, my caution to the finance committee is just to make sure that we're not so excited to get a capital plan and funding, because right now we're talking about potentially funding it from free cash, parts of it, obviously not all of it, hopefully. It's already built up to 4 million, and now Andrew's coming in, and I support Andrew, I think Andrew's fantastic, talking about taking retiring debt, which could go back into the operating budgets, and shifting that into capital. So, my only caution is, I feel great about that plan if we don't feel the operating budgets are getting squeezed, and I'm hoping that I'm wrong, trust me.
Yeah, I mean, you are...
Already, so.
Yeah. Well, I understand that, and I would say that...
Balance there.
There's no, there's no sustainable funding plan if we're talking about free cash or anything else. We've had, I mean, I finally looked at it, I mean, if you looked at the last 20 years, three of them, four of them have had positive free cash opportunities, and I call those windfalls. Now, all of it didn't go to capital, you can see, you know, where it's dispersed in a number of different places, and of course, the schools benefit as well from some of those funds, but I guess I just want to say that there has to be some, if we're going to be able to get ahead of the curve at all, where there's going to have to be some operating budget put aside as a sustainable means to fund this, and it's not all for the fire station, by the way, that 4 million could be all spent on all the other priorities, including trucks and everything else that we've been discussing. So, some people say, hey, by the way, we're really, it's a nest egg for the fire station. I think that that's, depending on where you're sitting, I don't, that isn't the plan, by the way. So, I would, I take your input, I understand that. The uber-focused comment, I think, is overstating it. I think we're just starting to scratch at doing a little bit of setting aside some money for this in a sustainable way, and I don't think we can get it to the balanced budget or the pay-as-you-go target that Andrew says and the time he says, but it's a step in that direction that we can control and not squeeze the operating budgets too much.
No, I support that.
But it's going to have to come from the operating budgets if it's sustainable, not from windfalls, or we can't...
Well, and some of the things I saw at fall town meeting, where we're, you know, we dumped a bunch of money into the OPEB, which I don't necessarily not support, but it's a lot of planning for things down the road, and I'm just, I just want to make sure we don't take our eye off the ball right now, because I just don't feel that service isn't Maynard or at the level they need to be. So, that's just a concern, is one member that I just wanted to share with you, I don't want to overblow it.
Yeah.
It's a concern I have.
And the only comment I have to that is a comment that anybody that's been on the school committee for a while knows that I've made in the time I've been on the finance committee, is that we have to look at it from the entire townwide standpoint. So, all those statements are true, but the OPEB thing is a real problem, so we have to deal with that in some way, and can't say that we can avoid that in order to fund an operating budget shortfall this year. So, what's the balance that we have to strike as a team is what I think we have to get to.
Sure. I just don't think there's a lot of discussion about how to spend that money at the past town meeting, so that's just some concern I have.
Specifically, the money that went to the OPEB trust? I agree.
No, in general.
The last?
There was some spending that happened, and I don't feel that the process was as inclusive as has been in the recent couple of years.
I would wildly agree with that comment. There needs to be more.
So, that's a sign of things to come, and I don't want to be wrong, that's my concern in expressing to you in a variety of ways.
I share that concern. I share it quite a bit. So, if I may ask, you talked to an eyebrow-raising comment, I'm not, it was alluded to in your email, Bill, but I don't really, what was stated that got people concerned? Was it the operating budget, or was that what we were talking about?
I may have the numbers not, correct me if I'm wrong, but what kind of came away from the presentation is that at this point in time, Maynard, as a town, could sustain approximately a 3.5% increase maximum operating budget. Eyebrow raising is probably the wrong word.
I could be 3.25.
3.25?
Yeah.
Overall, the whole budget?
Well, I think what Andrew was saying was, the town growth is about 3.25.
Yeah.
And so, then all the departments should just consider that to be really the goal aimed for.
Max, really max.
I think that was it.
So, yeah, that would raise eyebrows, but it's partly true. It is partly true, there has to be some discussion about where more revenue comes from.
That's the part that's always missing from the conversation, we've talked about that for years.
So, I agree. Now, I want to take, as a representative of the finance committee, what are we going to do about that? We've got a couple of ideas, but we tend to be in a role of fiscal oversight and make sure we've got our house in order, rather than visionaries for where we get more revenue from the future. And I think, I'm here to say, we have to represent, we don't have the budget subcommittee, we don't have another vehicle, that I think we have that discussion in a way that we all share the responsibility that there is an OPEB problem, there's other problems, and maybe it is 3.25%, without putting more tax burden on, you know, the taxpayers, both commercial and residential. What do we do about it? What are the limits? So, I think we have to grapple with that very, with eyes wide open, that some of these constraints that we hear about, they are real, and if you, if we don't like that it's 3.25%, whatever he said, max, we're going to struggle with, how do we rebalance that? And there has to be a revenue source, so.
I think for, if we're talking sort of townwide and in the big picture, one thing I'd like to see us do better as a school committee and then also as a town, is to discuss some of our choices in context, because I feel like 129 Parker, not to, you know, sort of raise the dead here.
I call it the third rail.
The third rail. I feel like it was a conversation, it was like, do you want 129 Parker, this development project, or not? And it, to me, it was embedded in a much larger conversation that was like, you know, maybe you don't love it, maybe you don't even like it, but if we can get some reasonable projections on the tax increase, can you live with it to generate revenue? And there are lots of things wrong with it in the process and all that, I don't mean to dive into that, but it's, I've sort of felt this idea of an acontextual choice, it's not like yes or no, but it's like, what would you like more? Here are a variety of choices, you want to maintain your services, great, I do too, I'd love to see the schools grow and develop, you know, we're here because we are investing in education, really, we see places where we need improvements. Doing great, but, you know, every system has that. So, you know, if you want to see your services maintained or even increased in certain circumstances, you can do that through, you know, increased tax revenue, which is generally residential in our town, you can do that through increased development, or you can choose not to, right? And I feel a little bit like, you know, we've talked about, people are like, no, don't raise my taxes, no, don't develop any property, hell no, cut my services. So, we're not magicians.
Yeah, yeah. But, you know what? It's as simple as what you described and as complicated as how do we start to turn the conversation toward what are we really going to do instead of all just fighting for our own little nautal of, you know, how we think it should be.
Yeah, no, that's true, I think that's definitely true. So, I would just say, sort of charge all of us looking forward with another development opportunity to really think about, how can we frame it in such a way that we can make those choices really granular for the folks out there who, you know, maybe aren't as evolved on a day-to-day basis as we are, looking stuff and see things the way we do with the experience that we have, but how can we really bring that to the surface? So, I know that's just one thing I would like to see us as a community do, is to get out from the onerous, what I call, acontextual choices.
Again, I wildly agree with that comment, violently agree with it. I guess what I, what I think, I've been in this role long enough to say that when you look at your budget for the schools and the town looks at, you know, in fact, not just the town, but Chris Okafor for the DPW looks at his, if there isn't some way to have an arbiting, you know, kind of compromise by looking at that in the whole context of, here's the revenue we got, you know, here's our expenses to keep the same services or hopefully to improve them, then there has to be something that gives and there has to be compromise. So, none of that can happen unless we have regular dialogue. And I guess I said it to you in a recent email, Don, that the vehicles that we have are all looking either backwards, which is great that the town accountant is giving us tons of data that allows us to see what the trends are, right, and where we might want to move, but we don't review them. I mean, I don't know about you, I only read the annual town report two nights ago for the first time in three years, and there's no good excuse that I don't read it more often, it talks all about birth rates and all kinds of stuff, you wouldn't be surprised, good for insomnia, but if we don't at least quarterly start talking about where are we going to be in five years, and what can we tighten the belt on now, but, you know, potentially invest in now in order to make real change, then all we can be reduced to is, you know, looking down at what's my problem this fiscal year, and I think that's crazy. Everybody, you know, DOR, everybody says, you got to have a vision session and then some realistic goals to get to where you want to be in five years, starting now. We don't do that. I would argue, we don't do it enough, if we do it at all. And I think it needs to be a cross-functional group that represents the whole town, not just, here's what we need for the schools, here's what we need for the DPW.
I would really...
That's hard.
I think that long-term planning would be great, I've been saying that for a while, we have to start all saying the same thing in the same place, maybe we'd get a conversation.
Yeah, I know. So, maybe, I just took my chance, it's a little bit of a soapbox, but I agree that, you know, we should start, you know, January, we should have a meeting, and have it regularly.
I have a question about the split tax rate.
Go ahead.
You said that, and I, maybe you didn't say this, this is what I heard.
Yep.
That the capitalization, the capital stabilization fund might start moving us away from the split tax rate?
No, not quite.
What did you say?
What I said was, Justin Cole on our group, who does, you know, municipal planning as a business, and so he doesn't speak very often, but when he does, you go, wow, I hadn't ever thought of this. He talks about the, we're trying to level the tax rate, and why are we trying to?
What's the difference?
We're talking about the commercial tax rate versus a residential tax rate, and I forget, I have it written down here somewhere, but I forget what the numbers are exactly, but it's more for businesses, right? And he says-
Just to, I think at most, it can be twice the rate of the residential.
By law, you mean?
By law.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's usually, sometimes we are at that point, and my pet, my experience has been is that, some years, you know, a lot of business owners come into this, who then say, oh, we're too high, you know, we can't say in business, kind of thing, so it gets adjusted downward, and then following year, you have residents coming in saying, you're paying too much because you shifted it, the burden onto us. So, it kinda goes back and forth between the two, never really finding a happy medium.
So, here's where data would help, this is my two cents. If you ask any one business to, would they like less taxes, you know, we all know what the answer is. But if you look at, that there really is a problem with the rent downtown, and there is, try to rent a property there. Justin was bringing this up, he'd like to move his office, right? And he asked, why the rent's so high? I said, well, here's my tax bill, right? So, we have to at least cover expenses, right? And I'm fighting to be able to stay, keep this building here without selling it off at a loss because of the tax rate. So, is that true or not? Well, let's look at the overall data, that's what, that's what the town accountant and a bunch of other of these resources are gonna allow us to do, and then make a decision based on whether it's really in the right balance or not. Because, if we make it a little bit more attractive for the businesses, and they bring in more businesses, and they open up more storefronts, and there's more foot traffic, guess what happens, right? There's a snowball to that, that doesn't happen overnight, it's gonna give you 500,000 this year, but over time, we get more conducive to bring in more businesses. Those are the kind of things, I think, make sense to take, say, say this 500,000 annually from free cash, what if you took 80,000 of that and tried to balance that and level that tax rate, right? And, and then there are other uses, so that you have a policy of how you're ahead of time gonna spend a proportion of the free cash, or any other stabilization. That's one of the sensible ways to use it. We already said we can't put it in an operating budget, wouldn't you like it to at least bring in long-term more revenue that allows us all to be able to have bigger budgets?
But then wouldn't that mean that the tax rates for the commercial properties would go up next year if our free cash fluctuated?
Yes, which is why you don't put 700,000 in and have a big, you know, collapse the next year.
You don't wanna have structural problems.
You don't want structural.
Structural.
Exactly. So, that's why I said, it's kinda simple in some way, but those kinds of choices become complicated. You gotta do that with some good, solid evidence, rather than just say, hmm, I think I'll give 60% of it to OPEB, right? We have to have some reasoning behind this. And you do that by having bigger conversation and more data in front of you to make that choice. So-
Do we have a target for where we want the tax rate to be, what we think, what that split-in relationship would look like, that is a long-term viable-
Well, 50% of the towns in Massachusetts have it, you know, they're the same type, yeah.
And are those the more successful towns?
Good question. That's what data would help us with.
Because towns are so different. Like, right now, like a lot, what happened at the recent tax meeting, I think about two or four weeks ago, they shifted the burden more towards the residents, so average house values, everyone's tax bill's gonna go up already, $280, let's say. That was just a meeting, and it deserved, you know, where I disagree with Bob is, you know, I looked at the occupancy numbers, and I don't wanna get too off-topic, but downtown's actually 97% occupied. Can't do much better.
You think it's the 3% are really visible, is that the problem?
It's just, it is. I mean, really? It's gonna be 100% occupied in downtown? And at the end of the day, downtown contributes 150,000 tops to the taxes, so I don't wanna get too off-topic, but we don't have a problem attracting business. We don't, I don't actually agree with the split tax rate just at this one point in time, I don't wanna get too into it, but it's a complicated thing, and to try to find another town, just like me, with a small downtown, undeveloped, commercial, large parcels, immediate income of where we're at, and we're not a regional school district, you're not gonna find a matching town to say, we should do it like them. It's just impossible, but what we're just missing are the discussions, the discussions about how do we move forward incrementally, and I really think we should get those going.
Can I add a little perspective to what you just said, which is-
I don't think I can stop you.
No, I tend to talk.
I could.
But just, yeah.
Go ahead.
But no, just as another example, and it's not, you know, it's a different community, but I happen to know, I live in a community that's fortunate to have like a Route 1. They have all these big box stores, and they make a conscious choice to keep residential taxes low, so there is a split tax rate, and it is literally the max. But that's what that community, and they get a ton of revenue because they have, it's just, the location is ideal for them to draw business from Rhode Island over to Massachusetts, and they're, it's fortunate demographics.
Yeah.
Win-win, it gets it roped in.
So, but every town is different, I just wanted to share that, because, John, you were saying, that's a totally different town, but they do do that.
Well, Thirney Ham is completely commercial in those schools too. So, let's, I mean, that's what I mean, you just have to look at your situation, and you have to, you have to do what's best for your town as a whole, and I think that we're all willing to do that, I just hope that we have the opportunities to discuss it.
And I'm gonna thank Bob for being here, because you are dialoguing, that's awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, my pleasure.
Just a comment that I had from the thing about putting money so that you can lower the commercial tax rate, and if it's more for rental properties, for businesses, my concern would be, okay, you lowered the taxes on it, are the landlords gonna actually lower the rents on them, or are they just gonna say, okay, we're gonna charge the same, but now we're gonna make more profit?
So, let me just make one comment. I brought that one up, I didn't necessarily agree with Justin, by the way, but I used it to elucidate, you know, that comment was made, and then someone said, hey, anything over a million in free cash, let's just, let's just hand it back to the taxpayers. Well, seemed like a, you might even guess who that is on our group, if you know the finance committee. But, what I use those two examples for was to say, we need to actually decide ahead of time, some percentage, some, some policy, and we need to share it enough so people can argue and disagree if they think it's not right. So, that was the reason I brought it up, by the way, and I know, especially the tax, split tax rate, probably a horrible example to bring up, because it's very complicated, and I'm not sure that it, like you are, that it's really gonna have the desired impact. But that's what dialogue and data, with the dialogue, not emotion, not, this is how I feel, but really what, if we study enough about trends, we should be able to make better educated decisions about how to spend this money, and how to balance it.
Because if we're facing a budget crunch, that becomes a really emotionally driven conversation, and it's, and there's not even enough time within the budget planning period that we have sometimes, I think to release us everything else. I think we need that long-term planning, so how do I make that happen? Because I, when I was chair last year, I tried, and I think I tried the year before that, it was one of my top things, like, get some long-term planning, and I made no progress, so, like, what, what do we need to do to make this conversation happen, to get it off the ground?
I don't have the answer. I have a couple of suggestions, but I'd love to hear from you, what do you think would work?
Would it work?
Yeah.
I mean, clearly we need to get the-
You've been trying for two years, you must have an idea.
I must, I did try for two years. Well, I mean, my, my goal was to try to persuade the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah.
And I wasn't effective with that. For a variety of, and partly, 129 Parker, that one year was going on, and so, I mean, I think-
Nothing else happened that year?
Yeah, no, it was, and I don't even know if I would expect a board undergoing that to like start long-term planning, but, I mean, what I think of my board is something like, two members of FinCom, two members of the school committee, two members of the
Board of Selectmen, moderator moderating. And I think that, it's similar to a subcommittee, it's just, it's just bigger, and you'd like to think that anything that goes back, so if it's Bill and Amy, and they come back to our board, and we sort of give some feedback, and then they bring it back, that we're all on one page. You know, we might not all agree, but you at least, you'll take majority thoughts back, and I think, honestly, I think FinCom being the least political body in town, and I don't wanna put it on you just because you're standing here, but I've said that from the beginning. I feel like that should be something that gets driven. It's sort of, when I first started being involved in the town things, I saw this at the budget subcommittee, where every department had showed up because they thought their budget was getting cut, and wasn't very good being a good discussion either. But something like that, and in open public, you know, completely open process, I would love to see something like that, but driven by FinCom, so it's not political.
Love the moderator idea.
Yeah, that, you have a moderator there, so not one, you know, not one person, the loudest person in the room isn't, isn't running the show or anything like that, but, just to get the dialogue going.
Yeah. I get, I agree with the thought process, but, yeah, no, and I guess, yeah, but, you talked for two years, Pete, you've been on a lot of these, you know, joint, either budget subcommittees or whatever, I'd kinda like to hear from you as well, and maybe others, who said, okay, we've started with a lot of passion a few times, and it fizzled. So, why does that happen? And because we have to do something different this time, if it's to be regular, sustainable, to your point, we're very busy, we get to the budget crisis, we get to a 129 issue, and then we drop it like a hot potato. How do we make that not happen? And that's-
Get in the charter, we're legally obligated.
Interesting. That's an interesting thought.
I'll throw that out there, but, I mean, you know, if we're legally obligated-
That would be a solution 10 years from now.
Justin asking a town knows how to do this.
Yeah.
Justin, how they do it.
Yeah, I think I might just do that. That's a good point.
Bob, the question behind?
Oh, sorry, yeah.
I actually don't have a question, but what you're talking about is essentially called an inter-agency coordinating council. And so, you have stakeholders from every group that has an investment in making the plans and discussing the, all the challenges and what the priorities are for each group. So, it includes every type of stakeholder, including seniors, including people in the community, but especially representatives from each of the town departments. And it generally can be done as a public meeting, and, you know, you have your voting committee, the actual members, and then other people can, you know, observe or ask to get on the agenda, that type of thing. And it's very effective for opening communication. And my experience with something like that is it's driven by the head. So, to me, that would be the town administrator, that, you know, we're talking about the future of our town, and planning fiscally for everything in our town, that's something that should be driven by the head. And you can even go so far as to create bylaws for who are the members, what the goals are of the council, and, you know, to, in order to sustain it, rather than having it being something less formal. You have public minutes, you can put it on the website, and that helps, you know, helps everybody be informed, because I really, I hear what you're saying in a lot of these conversations, like, I didn't know what a split tax was, and as I listened, I understood what it was. But laypeople like us don't understand a lot of, you know, financial stuff, it's just, woo-hoo, no idea. But, you know, to be able to go to the minutes, I mean, the longer I sat here, the more I was getting, I could kinda get what you were saying.
Sure.
So, that would be a fantastic vehicle to make it an open, you know, open communication.
So, do you know any towns or municipalities that use an inter-agency coordinating council?
I don't. Basically, what I just described to you is the inter-agency coordinating council for the early intervention, for the Department of Public Health.
Okay.
And that is actually derived out of a federal law, IDE, that every state must have that. And so, it's got some-
Well, I really appreciate that, because even having a model that we start with that's a little different than how we did it before, might give it longer legs, you know? I'm open to any suggestion, and if anybody hears, thinks of any others afterwards, we certainly, you can find us on the web. Please give us more information about that. And I'm not sure, I'm gonna take the mantle that you described, because I'm not sure it's, it really is the finance committee that can drive it and keep it going, but clearly, what I loved about this is that, this idea is that it's a lot of constituencies, council on aging, others, that make sure, because even 2-2-2 of the school committee, finance committee, and Board of Selectmen may not, may not represent those demographics very well. So, any other comments for you, Pete? I did wanna, no, I mean, you had some history here with how we work across, especially town and schools, and what committees make any difference, any other thoughts?
I don't know that I have any specific thoughts, other than, you're right, I've gone through an awful lot of, a number of years with this, and, to me, what, the common denominator of the problem is money, right, the lack of, and, you know, I mentioned earlier, I'm on the capital planning committee, and we have a meeting Monday, and the capital planning committee is made up of myself, DPW director, facility manager, assistant town administrator, town accountant, and fire chief. Monday, we're gonna sit around the table, and we all have things in the mix.
Yeah.
And I'm interested to see how we're gonna prioritize, because I'm gonna find it very hard not to prioritize the school input.
Yeah.
And I would expect the fire chief to prioritize.
Probably likely.
As long as they're in.
Yeah.
So, whenever we've had, whatever the committee is, it's, you know, we're putting a budget together now, we're gonna stick up for this, and so is the DPW, and the police and the fire, they have to. I don't know what the answer is, but I'm not sure it's gonna change, no matter what type of committee you get, when there's this pot of money, can only go so far, so everybody can't get what they want, and it's very difficult to decide who's getting what.
Can I add to that, though? I think it is all about prioritizing. I think since I've been here, I've seen, you know, a lot of collaboration going on amongst all the, you know, you know, all the agencies. We understand DPW has their needs, and, you know, we're flat, we need good roads to get to school. You know, so, you know, we wanna, we wanna be supportive, and, but, you know, I do like the idea of an inter-agency coordination council, who could then take that information and help prioritize, because now it's where the community's desire. Ultimately, you need to have community input, the hard part is getting people to meetings, it's getting to collaborate, it's getting the constituencies out, and I think that's the key you're looking for, is how can we get a commitment from different constituencies that represent the town, to meet, even if it's only once or twice a year, to look at this document, and to just make prioritization decisions? Because then you'll have the town's commitment, you'll have an understanding of what the town wants. You know, maybe the town wants to fund something else, you know, I don't know, a super YMCA or something, whatever, but you'll find out through the, that, you know, reaching out to constituencies, and I think that is a great idea.
Yeah.
If it somehow be laid to that, where the people are making the decisions, so that then you really do have a community understanding, they're learning from you what the actual data is. It's great that we're bringing data and having more data than ever.
Yeah.
Because, you know, everybody needs to be educated about all this stuff, too.
Yeah, yeah.
What if, what if we hired an outside facilitator to get, and the goal of the process, let's call it a one-year process, and the goal would be twofold. One goal would be to develop, I don't know, bylaws, as Jen said, some kind of bylaws. So, what are, what are the processes that we're gonna use for moving forward on our long-term planning? How are we gonna make this work? What's the representation? How often are we gonna meet? What are gonna be our deliverables, and when? What are the reasons for those deliver, like, why are we going to, you know, deliver whatever at certain times? So, that's sort of the first step. And then the second step would be putting that into action. So, at the end of a year, we come out with a draft five-year plan and a draft 10-year plan. So, now we've got a process that should yield specific results, and we've had some outside help getting us off the ground. Because I think the idea of a moderator, it's incredibly hard to facilitate when you are part of, there are two different parts of your brain that operate, and it's an unusual person who can do both, be sort of a contributor to content and personally involved, because, you know, we're all residents, this affects us. This affects us personally, this affects us where we live, which is, I think, one reason why the emotions are so high.
Sure. It's part of the reason that Andrew Skidner, as the assistant, you know, town administrator, who's not a resident, I don't think, right?
No.
And has some professional training in this area, and the fact that, frankly, that the capital planning committee did, never met, right? They, all the best of intentions, we never got a plan, really, in five years. With the best of intentions. So, so one would argue, we'll make more headway here, but it might feel like, oh, we don't have the representation that we think we should have. So, you know, maybe that plus at least one-year kickoff with a coordinator, you know, but somebody in town that's going to be paid even, but doesn't have quite the same stake that you and I have, and it's quite the same biases, perhaps, maybe that'll still work. Because in the end, you want to be able to have it be sustaining without having to have a paid consultant on your staff forever, right?
Right.
So maybe, maybe there's some combination there.
I don't know if there are grants out there for that kind of thing?
That's a great question.
Something like that would cost, like, whether it could fall under an economic development initiative in some way, that, you know, planning being really important for economic development, and some kind of a process to develop that vision, what that might look like.
Yeah. Well, I'll tell you what I'll do, so that it doesn't fall completely on deaf air, so I...
I will do a little bit of research into the, you know, the mechanisms and try to get at least a proposal that we'll get before member, your members, the members of the Board of Selectmen, and see if we can get something scheduled. But also, even if it isn't, if we don't have somebody on staff yet for consultants, maybe we would have that as our first order of business, try to figure out how to do that, whether it's grant money or some other money.
Right.
Hey, maybe it's part of the free cash, who knows?
Right, here you go.
Uh, one time.
That might not be a bad...
Non-recurring costs, who knows? So anyway...
Free cash to figure out how to spend a bunch this year.
It's a little weird, I know.
Well, it's like going to a financial planner.
Really?
You've got to pay them, and it's part of your finances, so...
If we knew how to do it really well, we'd probably already be doing it. That's maybe why we need some outside help.
Well, yeah, I think, because it's, I think it's, it's a hard thing to get off the ground. I'm not surprised we've struggled as we have, and we have had really good initiatives and a lot of energy, and we've struggled with it.
Yeah.
Well, you're all volunteers.
Well, yeah.
I mean, it's hard to do anything with volunteers.
Yeah.
And so what all the volunteers are being asked to do is more meetings.
Yeah, that's a really good point, that's a really good point.
Or serve on other committees and subcommittees, and, you know, when you sign up initially, you think, oh, it's two nights, you know, two nights a month, that isn't so bad. And then you start delving into all the other things, and then for, for us and some other, you know, it's like, okay, we're going into union negotiations.
My fourth meeting this week.
Yeah, really good points. Which is why I think it has to be some combination of us being represented by some of the people we pay, carrying that torch, and keeping it going, month to month, a quarter to quarter, whatever it may be. Thank you for the time. If you've got any other questions, by all means, but I think I've taken a lot of the time.
And thank you all the extra data you've been sending us. It really has been helpful. We've been looking at it. We had a couple of tickets up for meetings, and we've been looking at the data, so we really appreciate it.
We're going to bury you, because Mike's burying us. I mean, honestly, it's a wealth of information, and I want to start sharing it, because, like I say, you look at one year, not so much information. Three-year trend, it's starting to look pretty good.
And we're on track with giving information that you've requested?
Yep.
So we're set for that? Okay.
Yep, I've already got the dot dat files, we love those. Now, we got enough to be able to go on to start with, and we'll probably start doing the same dialogue we did last year, and invite you to one of our meetings. And I think it will probably be after the February meeting, by the way, because honestly, you guys are putting your budget together, so the department heads, having a meeting before we actually see it presented in February doesn't pay as much dividend as afterwards. All right?
All right, so thank you very much, Bob.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
All right, as we can kind of continue this discussion in a different vein, next item on the agenda is fiscal year '16 budget.
I just mentioned, the budget subcommittee and curriculum committees have met several, had had several post meetings already over the last couple of weeks. And we reviewed the fiscal year '16 budget submission sheet, that you've seen that sheet, we've used that process in the past. It kind of prioritizes things that we have to do, contractual obligations, it prioritizes things that we feel are necessary for level services, and then there's always the ideas as to where investments should be made in the district. So, I think the discussions tonight, because, Bill, you pointed out, we have a short turnaround. We have to get the budget submissions to the town administrator by the end of the month. We only have this meeting to discuss those budget submissions in that meeting. And I think the budget subcommittee's done a lot of work on it, and they'd like to get the input of the committee as a whole on it. Does that sound fair?
Yeah.
Summing what we've been working on? So...
So does every, does everybody know, kind of sort of looking at our new, new numbers, the three numbers that we give the town, and what those three numbers represent? Have we gone over that?
Well, so, no, we've chosen...
Well, Jess has been involved with it, but I don't think Jamal has done it.
Yeah, so...
No.
Jamal, I'll see if I can put it in a nutshell. We get a request from the town for a certain amount, and we usually give them that number as part of, this is, this gets us to a certain point, and we probably would have to make a certain amount of cuts to hit that number.
That's the TAs, the town administrators requesting.
We usually do another one that says, okay, this provides a level of service. And then another one is like, well, these are the things that we'd like to do, you know, that's more, and raise it up. The thing is that from when we put in a request, we can't at a later date increase it higher, but we usually end up cutting it back, trimming it down, sort of as part of, I hate to put it this way, but like, negotiations are trying to figure out how everything to fit, or we find a different way of doing things, and we're looking forward to it. And I don't know if you were involved with any of our discussions that we had in the springtime last year?
Yeah, I was there a lot.
Okay, so, yeah, I couldn't remember exactly when you started to attend, but those are the things that we kind of go through, and we were working with the, you know, we had to basically get a certain number.
Right.
As we agreed to, from the, from the town. And that came up from the, was that the Board of Selectmen's budget, or town, I think it was the Board of Selectmen voted, which was a little higher than what the initial town administrator budget was.
Yes, that's right, they did.
But it was still, you know, we were looking at cutting from what we felt was a level service budget.
So, and I'll summarize to where we're at, which is, the town administrator's advisory letter that I shared with you, I think, at the last meeting, basically said that it's probably prudent at this time to just increase the budget by your contractual obligations for salaries, and he gave some different descriptions of how the salary, you know, depending on where they are. Now, all of our salaries were in, we all have contracts with all of our employees, so it's a very fixed number for us. And so that increase equals a 3.16% increase. So we would obviously tell the town administrator, well, you asked what that's going to be, it's a 3.1% increase. The question is, when we look at level service requirements, some of the things we've listed here are an additional $230,000 in mandatory special ed increases, and also the yellow bus that we send kids, you know, to school on, is, we have a contractual obligation to increase that by about $7,000. Utility costs, there's projected increases are about $15,000. And some supply and textbooks, we saw at the beginning of this year, we hadn't been good about projecting in the past, so now we had Bill brought in a pre-elaborated book, and we decided we better start planning for that. And so all of that adds up to a significant increase of another 1.82%. And so we're saying that level service would be 4.90%. And then we've done some things, like Charles is here, he wrote a grant to try and improve our infrastructure, because we now have a brand-new high school, and we know what a computer infrastructure should look like, but we don't have that here at Green Meadow or Fowler. So Charles wrote a grant, but it's typical of the state, it's always usually a matching grant, or you pay 60%, we pay, you know, 40% or something like that. And so we included some capital-type needs, like improving the infrastructure at two of the buildings. Even if we do get the grant, we'd have to have some kind of matching funds to match that grant. So we're trying to be proactive and bring in money in different ways to help with those costs, but that's something that might need to go on the capital plan, you know? If, if the grant comes in, it might be something that might need to be funded through free cash, but it has to happen quicker, you know, because it's something that makes sense. So those are, those kind of, if we open dialogues, those are the kind of things we could talk about. And there's some computer hardware in there, and then there's additional staff, because there are, you know, we've talked to our constituents, we've asked our administrators and our teachers, what do we need in the classrooms? We've met with CPAC. One of the things on this list is a transition coordinator. That's something that recently, there's been some regulations about how we're supposed to be doing that, and we need to upgrade that. That's on this list. We know that when we look at the data as far as the amount of guidance counseling we have at each building, two buildings are pretty close to where they should be, Fowler and the high school. Green Meadow does, only has one, they don't, for 500, over 500 kids. So, you know, guidance counselors on this list. We just, the curriculum committee met today with the math coach and talked about a Title I-like program for math. We have it for literacy, but we don't have a tiered intervention for math. So that's another thing that's on here, would be a paraprofessional to help create a Title I-like program for math. And we, we've been meeting with the MMA, and they have suggested that maybe we should consider an additional music teacher, because we actually reduced the fine arts at Fowler last year to try and make the budget work. And originally, this building was designed for two music teachers, and I guess when it was first built, they had two music teachers, but then it shifted to art, to visual arts at some point. So when you add all that up, those are all the things that our constituents have said are important to them. It becomes a 7.62% request.
These aren't all what constituents say are important, though. I mean, they, they are, but I think it goes deeper than that, so I just want to say, these are just...
Yeah, no, these, yeah, oh, yeah.
So just, I mean, to advocate in terms of the math paraprofessionals, I mean, we made an investment, what, three years ago for the math coach. We have for literacy, and our literacy scores have always been stronger than our math scores, and you can see by looking at some of the data, we've got some real improvement to make in math. We have a coach for the teachers, one at Green Meadow and one at Fowler. And this coach is the, sort of the teacher to the teachers, if you will, that really helps them interpret the data and differentiate their instruction and, and all of that. Three years ago, we hired our first math coach, and we hired one for grades K through eight. So she's, you know, we have one where for ELA, we have two. And we're starting to see some progress, we've made some really good movement. I think we need to deepen that, and one of our long-term goals has really been to bring our math education, I mean, you can look at some of the numbers, but we really need to be hitting that state average. That, that should be our baseline target. I want to see us succeeding, and we're, we're not. One thing that she said, so we asked her, like, okay, if our long-term goal then is to really bring our math instruction up, and to give our teachers the tools and support that they need to make that happen, that's a widespread desire of the African district, she was saying, we have a really structured support of intervention that's effective in ELA, and it's completely absent in math. Because we were thinking, look, oh, let's hire another math coach, we've got one, two for ELA, we've got one, two, we have one then for math, and she was thinking that the the paraprofessionals would be a much more effective model, and possibly more and more cost-effective, and in fact, effective instructional. So I just wanted to think, like, you know, we sort of, you know...
Oh, yeah, yeah, this is kind of like, because for each one of those, I mean, we met with CPAC, there's a bunch of other things we've talked about, right?
Yeah.
When I met with the MMA, they talked about a lot of other things where they feel we haven't, again, planned well enough for uniform, we haven't planned enough for transportation. So last year, we kind of helped them, MMA, with that. This year, they're saying, this is the next step. But there's other, there's other requests from all of our constituents, you're right.
Right, right.
That's a great point.
But...
And, you know, there's some, and...
You just made, you just made it sound a little bit like a grab bag, and I want to be like...
Yeah, no, yeah.
But it's much more targeted and aligned, it's much more targeted and aligned towards our long-term vision of things that we've had, a vision of improving, strengthening, deepening.
Absolutely.
I have some questions, just more on the level service requirements.
Sure.
The sped out-of-district tuition and transportation, is that just an increased cost in that, or is that meaning more students?
I'll let Pete speak to it.
The out-of-district number, I think I explained this last time, that, that number may actually grow a little bit. That, that's based on our current out-of-district situation, factoring in our available circuit breaker funding for next year to supplement the budget. And it's somewhat a complicated budget, but the bottom line is, the amount, with the amount of circuit breaker money we're going to have available next year, we're going to have to increase the budget by a minimum of $200,000 to give us enough money to cover the current out-of-district tuition.
Oh, okay.
And the reason I say it may go up is there are some recent developments that are at...
So, so really, it's not a, that the places, the schools where we send the students are raising their tuitions way high, or that there's a lot more students? It basically is that we've been subsidizing it with the circuit breaker?
Right.
And now we're using that money up?
Right.
So we don't have that? Okay.
And similarly, the sped transportation projected increase is a result of some recent developments in...
Services.
Students we have to transport. This is totally unplanned going into this year, so we're getting additional costs this year that are going to continue into next year, presumably.
And the other thing I'll add, and I don't know if Jill, you want to help me out, and Pete, too, is last year, we saw significant in-out-of-district placements. We actually did return, Bob, you know, when we were talking about returning the unexpend, the unexpended funds at the end of the year, that's how we get the free cash.
Yep.
This year, we did return quite a bit, well, last year.
$144,000.
$144,000, I think it was.
Yep.
But it was because you can't predict these things perfectly, you know, a student might go to a 45-day placement, and they might come back.
Right.
Or they might go, and then they might need more services. And so Jill had predicted, you know, last year, that there was going to be some potential out-of-district placements. They were about six months off. So even though they didn't hit, they didn't hit last year, which meant we had to give back some more money to the town for free cash, but now they're hitting now, in this year, which means we have to plan for it next year.
Yeah.
Does that make sense, Jill? Is that a nice way to say it?
Correct.
Okay.
So all of that, $144,000 was in fact...
No, that's a third of it. Another third of it was, we, a pleasant surprise, which will help us with our budget, which was the solar array savings kicked in.
Yep.
And the other third, Pete, remind me, it was something else that was...
The other, not necessarily the third, but another big chunk is going into last year. Prior to going, the budgeting last year, we surveyed the teachers to get an idea of expected advanced degrees, because there were premiums that go along with that. And based on the input we received going into last year, we had to budget an amount of $116,000 in FY14 to cover this. As it turned out, we expended approximately $81,000 of that. It's like with any, you know, some of the people that had planned didn't, you know, they didn't get that particular degree. We're facing a similar situation this year.
Yes, so again, that's like a six-month prediction that could be a little off. So people thought they were going to get last year, they warned us in advance, so we could be prudent and put it aside, but now it's going to end up, you know, they're going to get their degrees this year, so it's going to come this year. So some of the money we gave, like a third of the money we gave back to savings, we'll be able to see that in our budget planning. The other two-thirds were things that we projected about six months off, but we're going to have those expenses this year. So just, it helps to make clarity as to how that happens.
Yeah, and every budget has a little bit of a story like that, right? Every line.
Oh, yeah.
Right? Some of them, it's hard to get them exact.
Yeah. Pete, the utility costs, what's that, what is that increase coming from?
I'm sorry?
The utility costs, 15K?
That's just, that's just an estimate.
For electric, electric and gas?
Electric and gas.
Okay.
And, I mean, some years, it's actually gone down.
But we, but we're now, the, essentially, the, the money we're getting back, the rebate for the solar array, is that a yearly thing?
Right, what I did with that, the solar, I call it the solar farm, the solar array, that project kicked in as far as getting rebates, I believe it was February, may have in late January or February of this calendar year, which was last fiscal year. The way the arrangement was set up is the Fowler School electric account was chosen to apply our portion, because it, at the time, was the largest amount. So when that kicked in, and it was earlier than expected, the result of that was approximately $30,000 of FY14 budgeted electric costs to Fowler weren't spent, because we got that rebate. So when we're going into FY15, I reduced the Fowler electric budget by $35,000. So this year, we're probably going to come in fairly level. Although, to date, I believe the solar array is actually working better than anticipated. This is good, it's generating more money. Maybe there's more sunny days, I don't know.
Well, we're having a couple of nice, warm days, you know, at least considering where we are in the calendar. So, you know, if that's because the sun is out, then, you know, it's cranking out some juice there.
Pete, are we locked in for electric rates? For per kilowatt hour?
We're not locked in for electric rates, no.
Because, I mean, it's all over the news that rates are, you know, going to jump 37%, I think is one of the numbers that I heard.
I hear that same number, too. I'm not really sure.
I'm just, I'm just seeking to understand better what our process is.
With the solar, the arrangement with the solar, the town has the arrangement with the solar, and they can, Nstar, as the supplier, they have to basically take this energy back. The solar farm generates electricity, that goes back into the grid, and it's kind of managed by a Washington, company, Washington something. As far as the electric utility rate from Nstar, that's not fixed, I mean, that fluctuates.
Yeah, it's just like the homeowner does. Yeah, it fluctuates just like the homeowner does.
So the amount of the rebate does depend, it depends on how much is being generated out of that firm.
Pete, also, I think the town negotiates our electric rate. It's not, we don't, we don't negotiate our rates separately or we're all one big?
It's not really a negotiation. I mean, there was, some number of years ago, and I was involved in it with the town, and I'm not sure whether the agreement is still in place. It wasn't really negotiating with N-Star, it was basically a third party was involved to come up with fixed rates for a period of time. It applies more to gas, actually, than electricity as far as buying futures. We do have futures for gas for two, I believe, two years.
But I believe the town does it for us. It's not really...
Well, I actually do the gas.
Oh, okay. All right.
Yeah. The other comment that I have is dealing with the capital needs. I don't think that they should be under our operating budget. I think that should be pulled out and pulled as a separate capital request on that, because actually, it might come into play. If we're basing it on getting a grant, what timeframe, I mean, I don't know what the timeframe of that grant would be or whatnot, it might be better to have that as, if it's capital, doing it as, at as special town meeting to get the funds to match the grant for it. The other aspect of it is, since that's almost 1%, I mean, knocks down our total, down a bit, because, I mean, I look at that and I get a little bit of sticker shock for it as well. So I think it just would be helpful to pull that down a bit.
So the problem, well, so Charles just emailed me the other day, he heard the rumor that the 9C cuts might affect that grant, in which case, we don't get the grant. I mean, we still need this work done at some point, but then we could use the slower process of submitting it to the capital plan committee, and we probably should. We should probably do that regardless, and that's a better way to do it. We're just concerned if we do get the grant, we don't want to give up 40% of the costs being funded through the Department of Ed. So that's why we put it there, but, you know, it's a bit of a gamble and hopefully I'll find something out while we're doing the budget as to whether that grant's going to be viable or not. We'll find out if it gets...
What we may, yeah, it'd be good to know what is the timeframe of that or when it would be needed to be used and expended. But then again, it also would be a thing where we may need to discuss with Bob and the rest of FinCom as to possibly, I'm assuming that we'd have a special town meeting in springtime for, that's something, an article like that could be on there, if there is free cash or any other money from that.
Yeah.
We have to look to see what's available, what would be possible, because it would be awful to say, no, we couldn't accept a grant because we couldn't match whatever the requirement on it.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
All right, any more comments?
I have some questions on this budget. Is this open for discussion now or is this something we should do offline?
I think we're going to do that the next budget subcommittee. That was the data that I know Tom's been working on with Pete.
Right, okay.
I don't know if we'll prepare to look at that, but maybe the next budget subcommittee.
That's fine, I'm happy to wait.
And that's actually for this current budget, right?
Yeah. Have you seen this?
I think, I think, yeah, I did see, yeah, I did look at it briefly.
Okay.
The other, but the other aspect of it is, is that being a little bit, yeah, being a little precise, we're saying that we're discussing in the agenda FY16 budget.
Oh, I see.
So...
Oh, yeah, and that's data from last year.
Or current year, or current year.
Or current year, that we were going to analyze.
Oh, I see. Oh, and we're filling in the 15, 16 column. Okay. Okay.
So if there's no, nobody has any questions or comments?
Well, I guess my question is, it was a great discussion, I learned a lot, but in the commentary under the item, it says that we needed to talk about whether we're going to submit a letter that includes the level of service budget or the budget with investments. And I don't think we ever really had that discussion.
Right, because the budget subcommittee needs to know what to prepare for you for the next meeting, to get your approval. So thank you, Justin, for getting us back on task.
So historically, we have always submitted the three budgets. One, what the town administrator requests, what the level of service budget is, which means what will it cost to continue maintaining the same level of services we've been doing, which is often an increase, because as you can see, we've got these fixed classes and then some mandates. So that's what level of service includes, like the fixed cost increase and mandates. And then what we consider to be the investment cost, which is our sort of working definition of that over the years has really been, what do we need in order to provide the quality of education we really want to see our kids getting, to be the best district you can and to really bolster the areas we need to invest in, what are the needs?
Right, and I'm very much in good peace with like what they represent and what the process is, it's just we have never had the conversation of like, do we need a motion to approve the letter going forward with the three different budgets in?
At the next meeting. I think we just, I think the budget subcommittee just wants some guidance, like Bill gave us some guidance.
He wants us to prepare three numbers.
Yeah.
I'm assuming.
Yeah, and Bill just gave us some guidance that we should really look at that infrastructure expense and maybe take that out, so it's a little bit more reasonable, but find another way to fund that, which we can have those discussions with the town or the finance committee, once we get the data, like Bill said, regarding the grant. If it's urgent, then we can have that discussion. If it isn't urgent, then we can do it through time, through the capital plan committee.
Subcommittee, please prepare.
How do you folks go about, because I've never seen the side of it, how do we go about making a request of the free cash? Because the computer upgrades, technology infrastructure upgrades seem like a great idea, something to use free cash for. So how do you go about that in the process? So, you know, in two weeks or whatever it is, we're going to come up with three numbers representing three percent increases, three different increases. But where do you, I can understand Bill's point about taking it off, but we still need to pursue it. Even if we don't get the grant, we obviously need technology upgrades. It's just walking through any building, we need technology upgrades.
I think in the past, we've had part with, when the older version of the capital planning committee would be functioning, we'd probably put it in with that. And it would not necessarily apply to directed free cash, but it basically is, okay, here's the capital plan, and you know, not really, it's not a long-range plan, but it's just a short-term plan, and it was sort of thing, what money is available. So it was more of them than looking and saying, well, what money do we have available to fund the capital plan from that? So Pete, am I...
So do we need to sort of give Pete direction, to bring that on to the Monday topic list?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just, I'm more trying to understand how we communicate our needs.
Yeah, yeah, no, I think, well, I think that's a piece of it. The question is, the unanswered question that everybody has. First question is, what's the process for putting on capital planning? We should do that immediately, because Pete's going to a meeting, and we should, you know, put that in and say, oh, you know, we recently got out about a grant, this is something we should pursue, and we should put it on the capital planning committee. However, we might pursue other funding opportunities. And then the question is, there isn't a mechanism yet, I don't think, for the free cash question. Maybe that becomes an addendum to the three letters, that we could do, the letter can have the three numbers, then I can say, oh, by the way...
These are capital priorities.
If there's future free cash...
Right.
We've already submitted these things, like the playground, like the, and we could prioritize technology, playground, but if there's free cash in the future, these are capital items that, you know, we can prioritize. Maybe we could add that to the letter, I guess, so that way...
Yeah, so I want to make sure that we're communicating our needs.
Communicating.
Whether we can fund them is a different story, but I think that we owe it to the district to just communicate our needs. And if we have an opportunity to upgrade the technology and get some state money, I think that we have to make sure that doesn't get lost in the long list of capital needs.
What happened in the past, and I don't believe this is across our school in Florida, at least for two or three years, as far as the allocation of free cash, prior to town administrator, several years in a row, made recommendations, as I, not as I understand, made recommendations to the board of selectmen as to how to apportion this large amount of money. And as you know, several years ago, the school got several very large amounts of money, for roof, for a security system, and so forth. And that was, that came about because of discussions that had been going on, I'll call them leadership discussions, that had been going on with the town administrator, chair of the board of selectmen, superintendent, the chair of the school committee, and, you know, conversations I had with the town accountant, town administrator. And when it came time for the town administrator to apportion the money, he chose, okay, here's what I'm going to recommend to the board of selectmen, X dollars for this, Y dollars for that.
And that's usually part of the presentation.
And I don't believe that's the...
It's actually, that, it's really important to note that any use of free cash has to be approved by town meeting.
No, absolutely.
So this is all, all that does is get into a warrant.
Absolute.
No, that ended up in a warrant, okay? It did, in fact, it voted favorably at town meeting, but the way the article was put together was input, and then recommendations from the town administrator. I don't know if that...
And I think generally, when we see the town administrators' suggested breakdown in using free cash is the February budget meeting, February Saturday meetings, when I remember seeing it. Not that we didn't have internal discussions.
All depends on when it gets certified. Lately, it's certified before February, but sometimes it's been pretty late.
Oh, sure, yeah. But the past few years, we've had plenty of notice. And I've seen it.
I don't remember seeing it at the February meeting, to be honest.
I miss remember. So I guess, like I said, I just want to make sure that we communicate our needs. I think, so Pete brings it to the capital planning as one avenue, and then we also attach, just sort of, I would like also just always include our capital needs on this, especially if they're more immediate, and whenever we submit to the board, so to Tia.
Okay. Any further discussion? Any questions from the audience? Okay, moving on, we have district assessment data review. So is...
Can we have Mark and Don coming up?
Very good. Thank you.
So I'm going to start with the first slide. The first slide is, it says, "How do you measure student growth?" And tonight, we're going to focus on MCAS. But when we think about student growth, our student assessment, we're really thinking about a number of different categories. One of the things we've really committed to is having all students in our school district make one year's worth of growth as a result of advanced literacy instruction during the current school year. This really needs to be a goal, and we need to look at this as a goal of all students who have high, medium, or lower performing. So we really use three measures when we're measuring, when we're assessing student growth. One, of course, is in-class homework assignments, and everyone's pretty familiar with that. Last year, we started a STAR program, a STAR, which is a short-cycle assessment. We give this three times a year. We've given it once, we gave it in the fall, we're giving it again in January, we'll administer it the last time at the end of the school year. This provides standardized evidence correlated to the common core. And the third one that we're going to report on tonight, of course, is MCAS. And this really provides a criterion, reference, standard-based evidence of student growth. We've been using this for a number of years, but we need to remember that MCAS after this year, with the exception of grade 10, is going to be changed to PAR. Okay, so next year, we're going to be giving, receiving different results, we're going to be administering the PAR in the spring here in May, and so we'll be hearing more about PAR then. What we try to do is we try to triangulate these data points that every student, to provide the most comprehensive snapshot of student math and reading proficiency and growth. And this year, we've engaged in a very ambitious and comprehensive program developed mostly during early release time, using our teachers. We've been so good about all of this, and taking all of this data, interpreting the data, and thinking about how the data can be used to impact students and student learning. This is one report that we're giving you tonight. I asked Mark Sinopoli to help me with this report, and Mark, of course, being a great guy and being a real data person in our school district, said he would consent to do this. So he's going to be taking over a few of the slides as we go through this tonight. The slides are really designed around two pieces. One of them is to give you the data, another's going to talk about the programmatic things that we've been doing in the district since, during the coming school year, and some of which we've already talked about tonight, which was one of the intervention programs we mentioned earlier, that we'd like to see in place next year, specifically mathematics. In February or March, we'd like to invite, school committee's permission, of course, we'd like to invite our coaches back, our math coach, our ELA coaches, to come back in to talk about interim reports, such as what is the STAR report really saying about individual student data? What direction do we want to take in terms of STAR? How has STAR really been used? How are we using it to really impact our instruction and student learning in classrooms? But because we've only had one test this year, it's not, it would not be profitable to talk about STAR at this point, because we'd like to have comparative data, so the second value will be of STAR, will come in in January, and then we want later on. Okay, this is the summary of CPI data, and Mark's going to go to the next slide, from 2014 to 2013. This is an overall summary of English language arts and mathematics, three categories. How did we do in 2014 compared to 2013? This takes into the nature of the overall MCAS tests. For example, in grade three, we didn't do as well in 2014 as we did in 2013. And then as we go down this category, go down through each of the categories, in ELA, mathematics, it says to us, okay, why did you do as well in each of these categories? What's the nature of contributing factors that can be used to think about each of these categories? For example, if I look at grade three in mathematics, I could say, well, you know, we put a lot of horsepower and support behind operations and algebraic reasoning and thinking. We gave a lot of professional development last year. And actually, with operations and algebraic thinking, if we look at the standardized scores on that particular category, we find that we're nearly at the state average. But if we look at other areas, we know we're deficient in fractions, we're significantly deficient in fractions, and that contributes to a decline from 2013 to 2014. And I'm going to go to the next slide, which further illustrates some of what we've seen over the last two years.
Mark? Can we stop right here and let me start from here? Sure. Yeah. All right, I'm trying not to duplicate anything that Don's talking about, but to give you perspective of what you're looking at, think about baseball, and think about pitching and hitting, and think about the Red Sox and all the different teeths they have, or the hot top hitter, Red Sox. And you want to look at all of these numbers and say, like, grade three, you know, pitching wasn't as good as last year, neither was hitting. Pitching was better, hitting was better, and so on. So that's the first way to frame the data, is just to look at it like that, okay? Each grade is like a different little organization. Pete, where?
Sure. You can do that.
Okay. So I've got a couple of things I wanted to say. And first of all, that there's a lot of data out there. And the same way that I'm looking at this in terms of a baseball analogy, there is just so much data out there that even in baseball, you know, you have this guy Billy Bean, who started the whole data analysis to try to optimize, you know, how the OpenMAs did, you know, in terms of improved performance, without really raising the payroll. So I think in a way, we're sort of in a situation just like that. We want to try to optimize and make things better, but you just don't have unlimited resources to do that. If anybody has any questions about any of the data, you know, jot down a question or interrupt me, because you're only getting one snapshot of data, this is data called the CPI, okay, which is the composite performance index. The way that that works, and in past years, we've had a slide about this, and I can just sort of give a brief explanation of this. Everything boils down to how did a particular student score on a test in terms of percent correct? Okay? Seventh grade, the MCAS is a 54-point test, you know, let's say, if you get half the questions right, okay? The state has a special, they call it thresholds, it's the percentage of how they get distributed into four categories, okay? So you've got the warning, which is usually for grades three through eight, zero to 50%. Okay, so if you get less than half the test correct, the state calls that a warning failure. From about 51 to 70%, it's needs improvement rating. From 71 to 90, it's the proficient rating, and about 90 to 100, it's a, it's advanced. And the numbers are not exactly at that level, but that's where you sort of start. The state declares proficiency to be the proficient in advanced, which is 71 to 100%. So that in a way is the goal that we want. We want all the kids to get at least 71% of the questions right. At the high school, because it's graduate required, the percentile will be lower. For warning, it's about 0 to 30. Needs improvement is about 31 to 50. It's almost like a bump over the level there. Proficient is 51 to 70, advanced is 71 to 100. The state firm board does report the distribution of students each category. So you might see something like 15% in warning failure, 20% here, and so on, that adds up to 100%. So CPI is one way that the state rates us in terms of improvement categories. SGP, 20% higher, which I'm not talking about tonight, is another way that they're starting to work. All of these ratings here come from the CPI change. Okay, so now to the next slide. This is the slide that I showed the school committee last year, okay? So you can think of this in baseball, like this was the 2013 season, okay? So maybe the coaches and the owners, they all look at, you know, the statistics and say, okay, what are our decisions, you know, to improve on for next year? So... So, I'll skip over there. So, this is what we saw last year. The next slide is facing the same graph for this year. As you take a look at the numbers here, what you don't know is the actual CPI number. The actual CPI number is the average of every kid. Students who score proficient, advanced are worth 100 points in the CPI calculation. Students who are needs improvement are either worth 50 or 75, depending whether they're above or lower half. And students who are working failing are either zero points or 25, again, depending on where the fall. So you take all your students, add up all their numbers, and we divide by how many, and you get a CPI for that grade level. So in 2013, I might explain it that way, take a look at grade three, three. So, the numbers in orange, the states in blue. So when we looked at the year-to-year grade three change last year, in grade three, they went up one point in CPI. Math went up 6.4.
So, Mark?
Yes?
We're looking at the third grade of the year before, comparing it with the third grade of this year.
Yeah, these students right now are in fifth grade.
So, so that, we're not comparing the same population of students?
No, that's how the state rates us, right now.
So, you realize the assumption would be that one set of students is the same as one set of students. It's been my experience that some grades or some graduating classes have much stronger students than years before or years after, so that it's kind of like comparing apples and oranges in this mess.
I believe that's true, and in a smaller district, it's more true than it is in a larger one.
Yeah.
When you have a large enough population, it doesn't matter much.
Yeah.
But for us, there's advantages and disadvantages to, to our size. Okay? But, so looking at those numbers, you know, you might say, okay, you know, the math scores went up 6.4. On my iPad, I can tell you what that number is. Did it go from 80 to be 6.4? Was it 70, 70, 6.4? That's one way of looking at it, but for us, it's, we want to get our number better, no matter where it is. That's the first thing. And of course, anything you mentioned about how, we definitely also want to get above the state average. So that's sort of where you start to orient your goals. So, this is what it looked like last year. And again, if you're on the coaching staff or the owners, and you want to say, okay, you know, we need more pitching, more hitting, we need something. And I believe it was a couple of years ago, you know, the decision, but the math coach coming in was designed to help us be, get better at improving the math scores, and of course, the literacy coaches were coming on to be the literacy scores. So this is the graph of two years ago.
That we saw last year. And we want to compare similar data. Right. We're hopeful it'll be better data in the future.
Right, so for example, you know, this sticks out. Now, I put a number line up here, just so you can see sort of like where they fall. So if you're to the right, it's better, if you're left, it's better. At the edge, not so good. So your game plan after 2013, if you're a fourth grade, sorry, if you're a fifth grade teacher, you should probably know something about these students. And as an example of some of the data that I was submitting, what Don's been talking about is, we have techniques for looking at those students, these standards reports, and trying to find out as a group, why were they so good? Was it geometry? Was it number sense? And then furthermore, we can go down to the specific kid and say, okay, which kids can we really focus with? Because after all, we're not the Red Sox, and we can't just trade a player or cut somebody. We have these kids, and we love our players, but we don't.
And Mark, knowing that we're about to go to the next slide, at the risk of stealing some of your thunder, like, I'm looking at that fourth grade group from the 2013 dataset, and saying, they had a really tough year on MCAS.
Yeah, both, for both of them.
Right. So, then, but then, if you look at the next slide, that same group took MCAS in fifth grade.
Right.
And I'm seeing a substantial improvement in their score versus the state average.
So, go to the next slide.
So that means something is going right, to be able to bring them back towards the norm by such a significant factor. So...
So, I would see that as an example of some success. You know, the math scores went down 2.6. It's certainly not as bad as the 12.7 that went down there before. So even though all they still are going down, they're not going down as fast, you might say that they're breaking the law.
Is it fair to say that that 2.6 represents, 2.6 percentage points below the state average?
No, no, the 2.6 is what the number was...
Oh, from the cohort before?
Well, and actually, they're being compared to these guys, which is what Bill was talking about before. They're not comparing the same...
So the fourth graders on the first page, or the fifth graders on the second page?
That's correct.
Okay.
And that's how the state looks at one measure of accountability.
Okay.
So, with 2014, so right now, the third grade students here are now in fourth grade. Okay? And certainly looking way out there, from my perspective, out there in orange, if you want to go back a slide.
Hit the back, press the back, hit the back there.
So, just to look at those two scores, for grade three, you had students who were growing, and then go to 14 again, and they're still growing, and even more. So right there, whenever we did fourth grade, built on or accelerated, you know, the learning of those students.
But then that also puts the grade below them, or above them in this chart, at a disadvantage, because now we're being compared to students who are doing well.
Right, except that if you're optimistic in that we are constantly maintaining our efforts about grades, you expect to see that. However, different students have different strengths and weaknesses. It's the nature of each. Okay? So you definitely want to tie the same numbers pushing to the right. And again, you know, the grade five students, they had not so great in the fourth grade year. The state also came down a little bit there in the blue numbers. You can sort of see they're all sort of in the center there. The state does not really change as much, because again, it's a really large population.
What year did the math coach start? This is the third year.
Was it 1213 her first year?
I think maybe the second.
This is her, I think it's her second, her second year. I think it's her second year.
Okay, it's her second year, so last year, her first year?
13, 14, 15? No, 1213, 13, 14, 15.
This is the start of her...
Her third year. Yeah, it's her second year. It's her second year. Let's not bring in the horrors of these.
So, this is the data from, from MCAS, March and May. Probably what's concerned is something down here. Anything to the left is concerned, so then those are areas we should probably target improvements. And I think it's probably, where Don's been talking about this. I do want to say that teachers are looking at data, we're also looking at more data than they did with Don Schobin's first slide, with, you know, your in-house assessments, your STAR assessments. Last year, we've known, we talked about this, it's actually February, it was last year, it's February. So it's only like 10 months ago. So, in February, we only taken maybe one or two STAR tests. We were still starting to learn how that could help us. I believe that the STAR tests are awesome, helping us in a way to get a little more of an update or checkup, like a mid-season report on how we're doing in terms of proficiency with MCAS, because that is one of the purposes of the program, is to help you predict, you know, proficiency in MCAS, with the performance on that STAR test. There's still a lot more data to look at. So even though you look at some of these numbers, and you say, oh, to the left, that's bad, it's not necessarily bad on much, because, like I said before, these grade five scores, they probably have a growth percentile over 50, which is also another standard to look at. So, that's one thing. And that's, that's really what I have for tonight. So if you do, definitely if you have any questions about any of these other datas, I know that some of you have been, in the past, pushing about cohort data, where you are actually trying to compare students to students. That's a really tough thing to do. There are some reports you can run that look at only the students who stay in your district, but it's really hard to maintain that type of data. If you look at grade one to grade one or two, and a student drops out, you can go to like, who's the access or somewhere else, sometimes if they're a really good student, that can hurt your, your score, because in May, you can think of every student's a point. So if you want to make a difference right here, get four students to do better, and then that number might go to zero next year, and it could be something like that. But these are all the strategies that we're leading to with Don, and the rest of the research. There's no questions.
Thank you for working on the baseball information. You know, I think it's absolutely great that we have, Mark is really our expert, internal expert on data, because not only does he communicate this to the school committee, but he's also out there communicating this to the coaches, to the individual school buildings. He's ensuring that this information's getting out there in a, in a really effective way, so that we're able to make decisions based so much on MCAS. It's not that MCAS is always the driver of this information. We've been using MCAS up until now to say, okay, we believe that we're deficient, because we look at some of the subset areas in here, for example, in fractions or in computation, we realize that some of these areas, in some of these areas, we're pretty deficient. What do we need to do about it? And you know, three years ago, we hired our math coach, we brought the math coach in, she began to look at the data, and she said, how do we really need to change the pedagogy? And that's going to be the substance of the next few slides we're going to report. Okay, so this year, thanks to the school committee's support of an early release program, we began an early release program, which was designed to really digging into, you've heard us talk about digging into student assessment data. And this year, we really got much more involved into digging into student data, to the extent that we're using the majority of our early release time to look at the individual STAR data, to look at the MCAS data, to figure out, if we're thinking about using this data, how can it impact student learning? How would it change what I was doing with a kid? How can I individualize better for a child in my classroom? We're using STAR assessments, as I said, they're administered three to four times in the current school year, once in the fall, or winter, early spring, and then the spring. Student information from STAR is considered during teacher, leader, literacy, math coach, early release planning meetings. All of this comes forward, and we begin to talk about, how are we going to own this data? What are we going to do to improve individual instruction and improve student learning? We began with an ORID strategy, an ORID training at the start of the school year, at least at Green Meadow School. ORID really talks about three major factors when we're looking at data. One is objective, reflective, interpretive, and decisional. So we begin to be reflective about what the data says, then we interpret the data as a teacher team, and then we say, what decisions can we make individually for kids in our classes based upon what we're seeing with STAR data? Oh, with MCAS data, how can we own this data to improve instruction? Okay, the next slide. In mathematics, as I said, in grades two through eight, we're using student data for form of instruction, that's STAR and MCAS. We're using our math coach and teacher leaders. In K through three, we're implementing, we're implementing a Common Core aligned curriculum. In math, called GoMath, we've had really great success with GoMath so far this year. I answer you. Anne want to speak at all about that? I invite them.
What is GoMath? I've heard of the term, but I'm not sure I really know what it is. I know it's a curriculum.
It's basically the math, it's the math curriculum that's produced by both of you. I think the GoMath aspect of it is sort of like, you're cheering on math, and getting involved and interested in supporting all the math programs on the Go. So it's really got a lot, we're using it some to the seventh grade as well. You know, I see my son's homework, I know you have too, so, both of you. I'm speaking Spanish. It's just all the activities that are designed to support the Common Core, trying to make it fun, interesting, engaging, it's just, you know, go back.
And in addition to the curricular resources that the teacher have to teach with, there's also an online component as well, that students can use.
Yeah, it's got a lot more resources. I've been farming, buying resources for the past 15 years, and what they have in K through six is so much more than I have in seven. I'm really actually jealous, which I talked to Don before, but there's a lot of resources to give teachers the tools to try things out different ways, different instruction materials. You know, they've got a work, consumable workbook that I know they're using, they're drawing numbers, they're writing numbers, they're counting numbers, it's all about building math fluency that's progressing. So it's sort of a buzzword, and teachers are talking, we're using your district, we're using GoMath, we're using Connected Math, we're using, you know, some other programs.
Chicago. There's a lot of different curriculum out there.
So it is a, it is the curriculum, it's, okay.
GoMath is really a resource for us. You know, before, we had many, many teacher-created resources, the teachers did an excellent job in getting this together, but we really wanted something that was Common Core-aligned, that we could commit to, because we've done an extensive amount of professional development in mathematics and mathematics, pedagogy, and assessment. Terry's been in charge of that over the past couple of years, and we wanted something that could really support the instruction that we're delivering in our classroom for kids, that we could use to differentiate, and that would also support the data that we're seeing. So if we said, well, the data's a little bit deficient, what specific resource do we have in GoMath, which is extremely common? We have the 2015 version, as Bob mentioned, there's an online component, there's actually a secondary component that we can use for interventions with kids if we need to. And we realized that this would probably be the best and most extensive and comprehensive resource that we could possibly have in grades K through three. We've also, as Mark said, we're using it in grades seven and eight, we're piloting a component of it in grade nine. We may at some point decide that we want to bring it into four and five. In fact, in meeting with the sales representative today from GoMath and Pope, he, I recommended to him that we, and asked him for a, an online component pilot for grades four and five at Fowler for the remainder of the school year, well, from now until June, such that we can begin to evaluate the online resources, to think about, is this something we would want to use in the future? Right now, we're using Envisions, which is relatively new, but we decided we'd like to at least look at this and evaluate its purpose and efficient effectiveness between now and the end of the school year.
So, Don, what grades are definitely using it now? I know K through...
K through three.
Three, seven, eight, nine.
Is definitely using it, seven, eight, and nine.
Okay. Thank you.
But a couple of them are pilots. We actually consented to do a pilot, by doing a pilot, we were able to get the materials right now at no charge, some of the upper grades. Okay, so, we also know that at Fowler, we've talked about this before, we're using a zone, a proximal development time to focus on critical concepts for certain children that are identified through the assessments. At GMS, we're also exploring options for math interventions to support critical concepts. One of these is going to, we're proposing right now that we have a pilot program that we will run for about six weeks, starting probably in January, probably in January, which will allow us to identify kids who might be tier-two students, who could benefit from an intervention program, pre and post-school. The kids who come to school a little bit early, they might stay late. We're looking at this as something that we might consider for about 40 kids, starting in January. Those kids, again, would be identified by the data from our assessments. One of the things we've also been using, many of you have heard about this, is Reflex Math. We found that our fact fluency was not what it should be, particularly in the lower grades. Terry came in and said, let's engage and bring into a program called Facts, Fact Fluency, which assess, which assess the student's ability to work on math facts. This has taken out very well, and we can also get assessment data on that. The math coach, as we've said before, provides a significant amount of professional development on math pedagogy and assessment, and will continue to do that. She actually met with me earlier this week and said she's concerned about the kinds of pedagogy, of teaching instruction that we're doing in fractions, and she wants to do some additional professional development after we start them, as we get into January, for people to assist them with fraction, fractional instruction.
Quick question, can you just, the Fowler using zone time, can you just go over briefly what that is again?
Sure. What that means is, as we, if we identify a child, for example, who might be deficient on a mathematical concept, let's say fractions, what we, what we do is, we take those children out of the classroom, and we put them in special class or intervention, with a given specific instruction on that particular skill.
And also, that has to be used not only for intervention time, but can be used for accelerated time. So if students are grouped by their...
That's what I was wondering, is it all students, or if it was...
Right. Yeah, if all students are grouped during that time, by their social proximity development and needs, or in some cases, it's not needs, it's acceleration.
Yeah, and it looks a little different in each grade, at least at Fowler. So four, five, six, seven, it's all slightly different. Six and seven are probably more similar, four and five are similar.
And they reconfigure throughout the year, because a kid who's good in fractions might not be good at place value, or vice versa, and so...
Yeah, and that's why we have those ongoing assessments, those short-term assessments, to help figure out, after we've done an intervention, now if a kid or child do something else, or needs to do something else.
Yeah, I think my question was just more, is are all the students benefiting from zone time? And I assume the answer was yes, but I couldn't... And I assume the answer was yes, but I couldn't figure it out. Thank you.
Sorry.
One more question for you, Donna, before we jump into ELA. I'm really pleased with the way that you're describing the data being used to identify students that are struggling. You know, it's the epitome of the RTI model. My question, though, is more the educational component, the professional component. How are we using that to drive the professional development decisions? And what kind of turnaround time are we looking at on that? And is there anything we can do to support that process?
Well, so the teachers have been doing a lot of data mining. We've used our early release time significantly for professional development around data, data mining, the data we have, how we're using the data. So we've done a ton of it, and I think the teachers could probably talk more about it.
Yeah, for example, like with STAR, in, at least in mid-September, you know, all teachers tried to get their students to take both the math and the reading tests. And then we had an early release day shortly after that, and we had access to the data. So we could discover things like, you know, is there a summer drop in proficiency? Because for the kids we have now, we had to start their scores from last June. So you can see, yeah, there's a little bit of a drop, so it gets close, it goes down. But overall, the group probably went down five or six points, which is not significant. And then we did it again, you know, it was beginning of November, and we had that data at the November 14th. And so we did professional development right in, right with the data right afterward, and we talked about strategies for how to react to the data, how to change your instruction. We regrouped students in zone time as well to take advantage of that.
I'm going to rephrase the question a little bit, because the answers I just got didn't quite answer the question that I heard in my head. So I'm more concerned about how is it influencing a change in pedagogy or improving teacher pedagogy to teach skills in the first place? Like, we're identifying and flagging these kids, which is awesome, but how are we improving a teacher's ability to teach some of those concepts that may not be being taught in the optimal manner? That's the root of the question.
I could answer that a little bit. So fairly early in the year, we had some PD around the math workshop model. Someone from Teachers 21 came in, and that's now a model that many of our teachers in 4th and 5th grade are using, where they're forming groups in their classroom, three or four groups of students, you know, five or six students in a group. And then the teacher is rotating around with those kids to give them what they need. And during that time, there may be some kids who are doing independent work, there may be some kids who are doing work on the computer, and there may be some kids who are working directly with the teacher. So that's an example of a model that's happening in ELA and in math that research has proven to be effective. So that's something that teachers are now using.
The other thing is Terry Morrison, our math coach...
You may be getting to the root of what I'm asking.
Yeah. Terry Morrison, our math coach, identifies any deficiencies or strengths within the assessment data that we receive, whether it be from STAR or MCAS. Then she's working with teachers as whole groups, for example, after school or during early release time, or more importantly, during Common Planning Time. Every week, our teachers come together, or they'll have a team time. Terry will say, well, I'm going in and meeting with that team because I'm going to specifically focus on one area of the curriculum where we feel that we need to strengthen. All we might need with a new math curriculum such as Go Math, she's the Go Math expert, right? So she walks in as the Go Math expert internally and says, I need to help people clarify how they can use some of the specific resources. We don't, for example, expect teachers on the first year to come in with Go Math and say, I'm an absolute expert on the use of the Go Math curriculum. You know, this is the first year of implementation, requires a significant amount of support. Today, for example, we met with the representative just to think about online resource support that they can provide to us and that we can provide to the teachers. So as we really begin to think about deficiencies within the curriculum that we see, that's the purpose of having a math coach. You know, the math coach, or Jeff also notes, we've also used Teachers 21 to do this, whether it be for differentiated instruction. That informs some of the ad hoc PD that we do. But I think your question too, Justin, went to, you know, how do we really inform our calendar? Our calendar really was built last May when we began to say, we really need to spend significant time this year analyzing data, looking at STAR data, figuring out how valuable is this when we're planning for instruction in our individual classrooms? So this year's professional development calendar was grounded on the use of data, interpretation of data, and using data to impact student learning.
The other thing is, as far as pedagogy, the course that she offered to teachers, I can't get the title, do you know the title?
The course is on number, which really is a mathematical course designed to teach, designed to provide instruction on the instruction mathematics and assessment of mathematics and assessment on complex concepts.
So she was doing professional, separate courses, and I know she started at kindergarten in her year, and she did a different group in her second year, so she was also working on that pedagogy.
And that's the part that I appreciate hearing, because say I'm a teacher in the classroom, and I have one strategy for teaching fractions, we keep coming back to fractions. That might work for 70% of my kids, and I may have the data to say, okay, I have this small group of kids that just aren't getting fractions. But if I only have one tool or one strategy, no matter how many times I expose those, you know, small group of kids to that strategy, it still may not work. So that's why I was getting back to the, like, are we using our coaches to target the pedagogy, like, increasing their tools that they have access to?
Yes.
So that we reach those kids that we're identifying?
Yes. But also getting to fractions for a moment and looking at Go Math, the nature and responsibility for fractions shouldn't be shouldered by third grade as the initial grade that's teaching fractions. You know, fractional elements and fractional models exist within the Go Math curriculum all the way down to kindergarten. So I'm beginning to look at specific models in Go Math where they may be visual models. For example, I'll simplify it, like looking at a pie, three or four pieces in a pie. Show me a kid a visual model. That develops concepts, mental concepts in kids about fractional models. So when they get to third grade, it's not, oh, we need to do a fractional one-on-one in third grade. These kids have already begun to understand the fractional concept. That's something that Terry is, I don't want to keep laying this on Terry, because it's also our teacher and teacher leaders who take on a great deal of responsibility in looking at that data and saying, how do I improve upon a fractional concept? And this is something we haven't done as much before because we haven't had the nature and level of data that we have now, okay? I also want to mention here too, because we always are looking at the assessment that we're, in this case, of course, we have to give MCAS, we have to give Park, but we're also at a place where we're saying, okay, STAR is the most appropriate assessment. You know, does STAR really match the needs of our kids? And as we move forward, we may say, well, there's another assessment that we'd like to use because it's a little more comprehensive. So as we move along, we need to just keep that fluidity in our thinking about the most appropriate assessment for individual kids. Right now, we're collecting a lot of data, and I really, I can't say this enough about our teachers really engaging in this process this year and working with this data. I, you know, in going on my own out to the Department of Education, they say, well, Megan, how far along are you with doing this kind of data analysis? Most districts are not at that level. But we really need to say to our teachers, the teachers have really taken incredible ownership of this data and are using it for purpose, okay?
Donna, could I add one thing? Yes, kind of like how are teachers learning new strategies and...
Sorry, we're going in different directions on that one.
Something that's happening tomorrow, we have an early release day. And the 4th grade math teachers, the 5th grade math teachers, the 6th and 7th grade math and science teachers will all be meeting for several hours, and I happen to know that the main topic they're going to be talking about is fractions.
Fourth fractions.
Well, that's an area that we identified that we're well below state average in. So that's, I think, a very good example of teachers being able to share the practices that they're using and maybe learn from their colleagues in the same grade or between grades about what's effective, what they've been doing, and also to be able to share. You know, this is what 4th grade kids need to know and be able to do, specific to fractions and so on for 5th and 6th and 7th.
And it's nice, because that sort of reporting supports the decision that we made to do these early release days, so thank you.
There are similarities in English language arts to mathematics, similarities, but there are of course many differences. We've had literacy coaches in place for a number of years. In our school district, we also have a Title I program at the Green Meadow School for a long time. But again, we're using data for form instruction, STAR and MCAS is a similarity, because of course we have English language arts, we test the same kind of test. We have zone time for literacy and math instruction in grades 4 to 8, ELA dramatic units, this is something we've been doing for a while. I need to credit our literacy coaches with this, provide opportunities for multiple written responses. It also shows in some of the data that we're doing extremely well with this. We use DIBL-TRA data for classroom progress monitoring in grades 1 through 6. This is something we've been doing for a very long period of time, and as you know, it also provides us with opportunities for progress monitoring amongst, between each testing period. We provide professional development on differentiated reading instruction. We also have, in this case, more people, more individual coaches who will lead this in our individual schools. As I said, we have the two literacy coaches. This year, I wrote a Title 2 grant to hire a literacy, a part-time literacy coach. This person comes in and is really a data clerk. She's exceptional in looking at the literacy data and aligning it to MCAS and looking at the STAR data and aligning it back to our curriculum and making recommendations. Her name is Karen Kilmar. Karen will be one of our featured presenters the next time we do the STAR and intermediate report sometime in the early, late winter, early spring. We also have, as we said before, we have intervention groups, and that would be in Title I. And I keep mentioning these intervention groups, because I'd like the school committee to think about this, because the intervention group system could be something that we could adopt very, I think, easily in mathematics, and it would provide us with opportunities to really improve learning for children who might be Tier 2 kids or below that. We could do this during the school day. We also have at GMS, we have an extended learning block every day at the end of the day. They do not call this zone time, but this is for math and literacy.
It's similar.
It's similar.
It's an intervention.
It's an intervention, yeah. Okay, next slide.
Donna, I have a quick question. Do you have any specific literacy strategies that are used for students with dyslexia?
Yes, that would be something, but I'd really ask you to talk to Megan Reamer about that piece, okay, rather than going over those tonight.
Yep, short answer's good.
Okay, so these are some of the current and future considerations. I just threw this slide up because think of STAR map and ELA assessments, the focus on data, and what, will we continue to use STAR as our short-cycle assessment, or will we use something else that we may find works even better later on? So we like the idea of having these short-term assessments, because they give us a lot of data, as Mark said earlier, they give us an awful lot of data on individual kids. But will we find something is even more effective? And I'm not hinting that something's more effective, but I want us to keep building on that thinking that we want to look at something. What is really the most effective? We've talked about intervention blocks at GMS and Fowler as something they would like to see in the future, particularly in mathematics. We talked about an intervention pre and post-school program at GMS. That's something we're going to pilot, probably in the month of January for about five weeks. That would be specifically a remedial program for kids. It would be something we would do pre and post-school. We, at GMS this year, so this is very new, I think I mentioned this earlier, we have a one-hour math block per day at GMS. This is not, was not something that was in place before. We've done a significant amount of professional development. And that's a really broad term, but really what it refers to is a math coach, even in some cases, like Teachers 21, Jeff's really great about bringing in people from Teachers 21 as needed to work on differentiated instruction and on assessment. We have that as a particular outside agency that can come in to meet the specific needs as we're seeing deficiencies in some of, in some of our classrooms or with some of the kids. How do we really improve instruction with professional development? We talked about a future math intervention program at GMS and Fowler. So one of the things we put in place at the high school is Edgenuity. This addresses achievement deficiencies as a self-paced, online program that kids can take advantage of. We specifically think that for some kids, it might really assist in some of the scoring that we see at grade 10. And of course, we mentioned earlier, the Go Math is one of our primary, is our new resource in mathematics in grades K to 3 at GMS. And we really believe that this resource is going to help the teachers a great deal in with materials, things they can use, online resources. It's really in its infancy, we've only begun to use this this year, and as I said, it's our first year of implementation, but so far, I'm hearing from Terry that it's going very well. Okay.
Question?
And beforehand, I want to really thank Bob, of course, who really brings so much of this to us. He brings so many ideas and makes so many suggestions, and is an incredible guy when it comes to thoughts and support for curriculum and curriculum initiatives. And of course, I want to thank the school committee. The school committee has been there all along to really support this and saying, well, we have a level of confidence in what we're doing, and we really do believe that we're going to be able to improve things as time goes on. And in your case, Justin, I'd like to see them improve next year. But for me to stand up here and say to you that all of these values will improve significantly in the next 180 days, I'd love to put some money on that, but I'm not a betting person. But I do believe that some of the strategies, or many of the strategies that we have in place here will improve what we're seeing with our kids. And I also want to thank our teachers, our teaching staff, and our administrators. You know, they're the real boots on the ground every day who make all of this happen for kids. And there's a lot more to a classroom environment than mathematical instruction very often. There are some kids who come to school, for example, and not know how to use the bathroom or how to put their coats on. And our teachers do an incredible job of really training kids and making them ready to really function in a school environment. So under the current conditions, I think we're doing an awful lot. We'd like to consider these additional objectives, or the one additional objective of an intervention program next year, and perhaps some additional added value for Go Math at Fowler in grades 4 and 5 and 6, okay?
I have a question and a comment. A one-hour math block a day at Green Meadow, is that happening or is that more of a future goal?
That's happening.
Does that happen at kindergarten and first grade? I'm just having a hard time picturing them sitting for what...
According to Mrs. Danekar today. Yes.
Wow. I mean, I have one of those kindergartens, so I just can't imagine.
And I've got one of those first graders throughout the day.
Well, that's why I was wondering if it was a one-hour block or is it 20 minutes every few hours? It's great if it is.
Well, I didn't answer that question, Donna, I'm sorry. I asked her if they would see that level of instruction.
No, it's fine, I was just amazed.
Because I think they have...
I think so too. I don't know, any kindergarten...
They can, they can even through groups, like...
Yeah, no, it's just, cheers, hope.
I'm more curious about the logistics of getting kindergartners or first graders. It's still...
That's my point, I was just amazed. And then just, on this list, where does that tie into the math pairs under additional staff back to our budget submission sheet? Or is that not tied together right now?
That was a little bit of creative thinking that we had about, you know, one of the ideas, I think one of the past recommendations was that we hired a math coach.
Right.
We were thinking more in terms of personnel interaction with individual kids and how we could effectively do that. And what we really talked, what I talked to Terry about is, if we were, if you use some of the paraprofessionals and you train the paraprofessionals and they had specific competencies in the teaching of mathematics, these are all hips, right? And Terry trained them and held them responsible, then in effect, you could build an intervention program that resembled the Title I.
Comes under the bullet that says future intervention program.
I just wanted to tie that together.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I can't agree any more that long before I got here, this community, it's a community of like long words, a school committee that supports that, teachers who have been living in for years, they enjoy the professional, love it, they believe in it. And so that's why we're seeing a lot of change happening in a very short amount of time. And we're hoping, even though we're not attending people, that we're going to see those changes happen even in the assessments. There are difficulties with the assessments. I mean, Bill, you're really good with math. Right away, you pointed out different cohorts in that particular type of assessment. They're student growth assessments, and we're hoping that maybe we can... And we're hoping that maybe we can, we're going to get so much data that we're going to have better data than the traditional assessment data, state assessment data. We're hoping to have that for you. We're hoping to do a presentation somewhere around February. As Mark and Don were talking about, as they get some more of that STAR data to show you that we can measure growth maybe better than the state can. And that's our goal, is to provide you some more consistent data because Amy, the reason why we only use the CPI was because that's what we presented last year. We want to get you consistent data because now they're talking about changing it from MCAS to PARC. And I'm pretty certain that when they change an assessment and they change a curriculum, you know, the whole common core, that the whole state is not going to fare very well. And I'm not sure how they're going to correlate that. Now, we're hopeful they will. But, and we're hopeful the state will be able to correlate it and we can correlate accountability. Bottom line, we're trying to provide better data and we're really moving fast at it. I think the teachers can agree, they're moving really fast at it. They've been doing it really fast. They've been doing a lot, but it's kind of exciting to work.
I think Amy said it very, very well today when we met earlier, just the shifting sands that I find that you all have to work in, administration, the teachers, it's just, I can't express my thanks enough. I mean, I just think, as much as I can get a little depressed during both seasons, I'm so excited about Maynor, you know, and that's why it was easy for me to talk to the globe. I mean, Maynor's amazing and the school system is amazing and you guys are all, you should also take a breath and appreciate all your hard work because I think you just don't get that enough, you know? It's just, I feel so great about where we're heading and I don't know enough about where we've been because I just have a kindergartner, but this is all great stuff and we should all be really excited. So just my appreciation and I'm sure the boards as well, just, this is amazing. We'll make it happen.
Well, the extent to which the teachers have just really gotten on board with everything and how quickly you've gotten behind some of the new programs like the STAR and Go Math, I mean, just from a professional standpoint, I can't imagine that it's easy, you know, to be like, oh, you've been doing it this way, now do it that way, oh, and do this differently, and oh, by the way, actually, here's another thing we'd like to change. And I'm sure there have been a lot of hiccups and bumps along the way, but it really does seem like the teachers have just been like, you know, rolled up their sleeves and really, really dug in. And I just want to say I admire that because they've been on the board seven years and they've seen a lot of, a lot of changes. And what I would, what I hope to see going forward over the next few years, you know, if something isn't working, we need to change that. But if we can, we've made a lot of changes, we've invested a lot, we can get a little head of steam on some of that too because I've heard people say you've got to teach something three years in a row before you really fully begin to integrate it. And so to the extent that we can like, I know we're not going to totally stand still, but, but now rather than change and reconfigure, we can maybe focus on deepening as well and giving the teachers a chance to really make it their own so that they, rather than like, okay, what's next week? You change this on me, my lesson plans are all sort of, because I could just imagine there's got to be some of that going on. So, but the way they've rolled up their sleeves is fantastic.
Yeah, Jeff.
Just wanted to say thank you for the nice feedback because it is true that teachers are working incredibly hard and there is a lot of things coming at them, a lot of moving parts. And, you know, huge credit to the teachers who are, you know, just doing the best to make it all work. And it is stressful, you know, there's just kind of a lot of stress and a lot of conversations about PARC and what that will look like. And we're certainly not all about that by any means, but, but because teachers are so dedicated and so want to do well by their kids, they are thinking about things like that. And, but, but thank you for that nice feedback and I think it's important for teachers to hear that. And I know that you share that with them as well as with us. But it is important because every day, teachers are coming to work and working with kids, some of who have a lot of challenges that impact their learning and they're working really hard to take care of those kids. And they're wearing, in today's world, wearing a lot of different hats. They're educators, sometimes they're parents and social workers and caretakers. And that's what our kids need in Maynor and every, and every place else, but thank you for saying that, it's appreciated.
Speaking as a teacher to the teachers, it's a hard time to be in public education. So, thanks for everything you do.
And I certainly want to thank you because I think what you have to say has such an impact on everyone in the school district, you know? Your attitude and your feeling, your support for our programs really makes us even want to move even faster, dedicates us even further to this, to the opportunities that we have before us. I mean, we may not be buying John Lester, but you know, we certainly want to see how proactive we are.
I wouldn't mind if John Henry just pushed that money to us.
You could just sell it to y'all.
Question?
Well, actually, yeah, like question, comment. So the Go Math is new at Green Meadow this year and I have a third grader and I, you know, friends with lots of third grade parents. And, you know, having experienced the jump from second grade to third grade, it's actually very, just in general, so very, very different in terms of what you get for homework and how you go. And then, so the math curriculum was a, that change was a huge source of concern for, not concern, but stress maybe for a lot of parents. I mean, there's a lot of, you know, talk on, you know, Facebook with the, oh my goodness, I couldn't, I didn't understand my kid's homework, I don't know how to help them. I mean, so I would say.
I had that mentioned earlier tonight.
I would say that that's another piece here in Maynor. We do have a lot of parents that are very engaged with their children's education and want to be able to help and maybe when they don't, you know, didn't understand the new curriculum. I will say, you know, that was, what was great was that Donna had gotten that feedback and I believe they, I didn't get to go, but they hosted the night and they had Terry there to explain the math and explain. And I think that's a, that's a piece that we're really, you know, good at and I love seeing going forward. We did, Donna did a parent coffee on, at one point on the Lucy Cawkins, that writer's workshop. And I think the parents that were there and it was on literacy, it really was so helpful. Like I know even for me, even having some, you know, any specialization, but just knowing the general curriculum helps me to know where it's at, what it's, what they're working on. And so I think always taking that into account as we move forward too is the parent piece. And that we do want to be educated and we want to know what's going on with curriculum. I just, I was at a meeting the other night and one of the other women, mothers at that meeting was saying, she really would love to know what the curriculum is for her children. I know we do have the curriculum nights, but just to even have it mapped out somewhere more strategically for her to understand. So that's just, I'm going to run it through now.
That's one of our projects too. We know that in our reports, we talked about curriculum mapping. You know, we kind of stayed away from that and I want to tell you why, because we really believe that instruction, we need to get our instruction in place first before we develop curriculum now. Because when we got really, when our instruction is effective and our assessments are working, then we can propose and build a curriculum map that can be timed and paced, that corresponds to the instructional model that we're presenting to kids.
We do have a plan to get that.
We have a plan to do that actually, but that will be coming probably in January of 2015, so.
How about '60?
We have a contract to be on it or working on that.
Yeah, we are working on that. I know that was a concern. We will get those up, which is great because then it'll be nice for parents to be able to see that.
Folks, you don't have to go, you're welcome to stay with us.
We understand, though. It does get late.
It starts to roll when we get close to the policy section.
I start to listen over.
And actually, we're talking about correspondence in the next two items here.
Well, we can do that.
Yeah. Going on to the draft letter to the town administrator on the facility manager position. Last Friday, I received an email and I'm not sure who all may have received it because, okay, Kevin, I mean, Kevin Sweet had sent it out as a applying copy for it, so I don't know who was on his distribution, but I saw it and was sort of, you know, late afternoon on a Friday realizing that, okay, we're not going to have a facility manager after the end of the year. And I don't know what the plans are in filling that position. And, I mean, I think it's a very valuable position and that it should be filled as soon as possible, but with a good candidate. When the position was established, it was initially set up where a third of the salary is coming from town hall, a third was coming from us, and a third was coming from the water sewer because of the buildings there. After a year or two, it basic, I believe, was all now being just come out of the town hall paying for his salary. But the point that I raised in the draft that I had is that by square footage or value of buildings, I think predominant amount of town real estate or, you know, facilities is us. So I mean, think that we should have some say in who gets hired because that's the person that we're going to have to deal with for our buildings.
Would it be fun part of the budget, part of the budget for a salary or is that just for one year?
Well, that was like for one or two years and I think we actually had budgeted for it to continue.
Was that removed from our salary, from our lineup?
Yeah, it was, it was taken out. So I just basically, I wanted to stress that I think we should have input into it. And, I mean, I sent out a draft, or sent to Colleen, I think she forwarded it, to everyone, a draft, a letter. And I just was asking for your endorsement of it and to authorize me to send it because I didn't want to act unilaterally.
I thought it was great. I think you're right on the money.
Okay, thank you.
Do you need a motion?
Forgive me for not recalling, I did read it. Did you mention anything about how the facility manager will have direct communication with the building principals? And maybe that's one reason we'd like to be involved? Because I'd rather, I think that's a little more compelling than square footage of buildings. I'm not asking you to rewrite by any stretch. Square footage of buildings, it's.
Well, the way I phrase it, hold on, let me just.
Yeah, no, I'm going to make.
I just said that given that a substantial amount of major facilities at schools, I'd like to continue your practice with it.
I think you're fine, Bill, don't get me wrong. I just, I'm fully following the board with the letter. Just thought.
I'll make a motion to accept Bill's letter as written or with the addition that Don mentioned if Bill so chooses to add it.
I'll second.
Any further? All in favor? All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thanks for directing it.
Okay. Next item is another letter to the Board of Selectmen and Planning Board confirming school space and availability. Bob starts this off.
Well, we, I think we sent out a draft, then we sent out a revised draft. And so I think we welcome more input. It took us, you know, we actually revised some of our documents that we were going to add to it and thought pretty carefully about that. And so I guess we could just open up to discussion about the second draft that we sent.
I thought it was great. I thought you guys said a really nice job. I have a couple of places I was wondering if we could add some rationale to just strengthen it up a little bit. So if you look at the one, two, three, four, five, the sixth paragraph, the last sentence, if the town is supporting 40B housing, the likelihood of increased enrollment cost and additional space requirements could become greater. I mean, maybe just saying, you know, because adding a little rationale, like 40B housing tends to have a higher percentage of families. Or maybe even, and I don't know to what, I don't know to what extent this is true. And I certainly don't want to say anything if it isn't true, but do we know if there's sort of like a higher percentage among 40B housing in terms of services and needs? Because I know sometimes a lot of, you know, some services are correlated with socioeconomic stats or maybe language like ESL or something like that, or it's probably just better leaving that part off.
Well, I think we kind of inferred that in this third to the last paragraph where we said historically, the majority of public schools' percentage of students with special needs has mirrored the state average, which is currently 70%. If there are larger enrollment increases in the student population, 70% of those students on average will also cost more to educate because of special education costs and so forth and so forth. I think we kind of inferred it.
Okay.
But.
I would be careful with.
Yeah, I don't think you want to go into more.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's just silly, so.
Okay. And then in the penultimate paragraph?
Good one.
There's a parentheses further down, it say no staff, I was going to just insert no additional staff. And then you say, but extra supplies, et cetera. I wonder if you could swap out the word supplies for technology? Supplies just made me think of paper and pens. But, you know, I think, I think sometimes our supplies are more expensive, you know, curriculum supplies are more expensive, textbooks, computers, platforms, all of that. So I was just thinking if we, for that et cetera, we have a couple of different choices. I just wanted to swap in the pricier sounding word. I'll leave it up to the draft, the people who drafted to decide whether to do that. And then the, in the penultimate paragraph, the last sentence, finally, I just, I got a little confused towards at the end. I read it a couple of times and it just didn't.
You already did as well on that sentence.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think what it should be worded to at the end when you're, we're talking about the 278 students would reduce the no additional cost enrollment increase to only the, only an additional 135 students. And actually, I would almost suggest to put the no additional cost instead of no additional cost and just put it in quotes.
Oh, I see.
Is there a way to understand that sentence that we can absorb 135 more students without any additional costs? Is that, I know it's a really silly question, but is that how I should read this whole proxy of what you're saying, Bill?
I'm interested because I read it a little bit differently. I'll do one try.
Okay, let me, let me just.
Because Dawn, I heard it as.
Okay, all right.
Get to 2028, that number goes from, we can absorb 278 to the, we can only absorb 135.
If, based on what I was trying to project, and I'm trying to remember because it was quite some time ago, is that we hit a high in 2028 for a total enrollment in the school system of 1,576 students. If we're looking at currently now, we have 1,423 students. So we could say that we could add an additional 278 students. Well, by the time we get to 2028, we really, if we're assuming that our projection is correct, that's really only 135 more students that we could absorb. So that if you're talking about like housing units or, you know, how many students you're going to get per house, that we're already projected to have increases in the next 15 years.
So you're saying without any additional housing, your prediction is 1,576 in 2028?
Yeah.
So that's without any additional.
That's without any. That's what's current, just basically assuming that we have on average the same number of kindergarten students each year. How, I wanted to note, is this year, we're only at 100 and some kindergarten students? Was it?
Yeah, it's down, is it down a little bit this year?
Yeah, it is down.
I mean, so, I mean, every year we're having fluctuations.
Oh, absolutely.
And I think on the, I'm trying to remember what I said up, but I thought we figured out as an average of like something in the 120s. So that's the thing where, you know, it's one thing if you say, okay, every year, we're going to have this number of students. Well, you don't. Some years you'll have 150, some years you'll have 100.
Right.
Are there any other further comments? And I think the only other thing was Bob, on the very, the last paragraph, the ultimate, I think Justin and I kind of looked at it and said that it should be all three threshold enrollment projections.
Right, yeah.
And that we caught that.
You had a plurality agreement.
Yeah. But otherwise, I mean, if we're in agreement, then I don't think we need to bring this back next time.
Well, we should make some changes like.
Well, with the change, with the one, with the changes that we've, that you reported, I'll take a motion on that.
So I move to approve the document as discussed with the amendments discussed dated December 4th, 2014 to the Board of Selectmen regarding estimated space for enrollment increases.
Sorry. Any further discussion? Go ahead.
No, I was going to.
Oh, okay.
She's jumping on that one.
Go ahead, okay. Granted, granted, it is after 9:30 and we want to move along.
You know I'm going to stop functioning.
So, well, hopefully we'll get it out before 10:00 and, before 10:00 is when you turn into a punk, right?
Yes, I know.
Okay. So then, all in favor? All right. All right, we're getting into policies and we have first reading and if you just give me a moment to bring this up. All right. All right.
Are we going second readings or first readings?
Let's do the first readings first because it's very quick. Essentially, we're talking about public complaints and concerns. There's no changes on that in administrative regulations. Staff conflict of interest, no changes on that. Gift giving to students, since this was. Since this was initially written in 2006, I upped the limit from $20 to $25, just figuring, you know, things, general things cost more for it. And we actually got feedback from one of the nurses on the students with HIV infection that this policy doesn't require any changes to it, other than the ones I marked where some telephone numbers have changed for more information, but everything else was the same. And I, we did ask some feedback from our IT people on the computer accessible use, and we just have not received anything back for that yet. And the same with the child abuse and the select and reporting procedure. Asked Jill to see if this requires any updating and just have not received that back yet. And that is those for the first reading. And if I can bring up the second read one.
Is there time to discuss any of these?
Oh, yeah, we can discuss now.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. In terms of the public complaints and concerns, I was wondering if there's any benefit to explicating what the process might be to bring something of concern forward to the school committee? Because it said, no community member will be denied the right to bring a complaint to the major school committee. Maybe just say something about what that process is, you know? Residents are encouraged to contact either the superintendent or the chair of the school committee. Because it just the way it's, the way it's written, it just doesn't seem to me that it's going to help. I'm not into how would I do that?
Okay. We do have, we do have, we do have the public checklist, but that isn't really a procedure type of thing.
Right.
So, all right, I'll look into that.
And on the, and on the checklist, there are a number of things that look like footnotes, like C, you know, policy number 215, C note 2, C note 3. I don't know if those, I wonder if those could just be, just be compiled as footnotes, if it might just be a little bit neater formatting.
Okay.
And then this is a, just, on the computer acceptable use, I don't know how this fits or whether it fits at all with an acceptable use, because you're really talking about, you know, things like privacy and password protections and not looking at pornography and things like that. But I was just wondering, what about ergonomics? Because there's a real health issue, I think, that we haven't thought about as a society, really, the people sitting at computers. I know, you know, all of us adults have our little problems, but we sort of started sitting at computers when we were much older, and then we've got like these tender little bodies, and they don't, they don't necessarily sit a lot, but, and like I said, maybe this isn't the place under the computer accessible use, but I just wanted to throw...
Probably more a wellness thing.
Maybe. I'm just wondering if we should sort of attend to that a little bit as a district, that, you know, posture and the way you're, and how your neck is aligned and all of that.
It's also, you haven't hit the, you haven't hit the spot when you have a teenager who's lying on her bedroom floor with her feet up on the, on the bed with their iPhone going like this on things and, you know? Although, that gives business for Jamal.
Very true.
I have three kids that could come your way.
But maybe that's something the Wellness Committee can take up because it could fall under that. Maybe Jamal could bring it to the...
Okay. Some people have had some really long-term injuries as a result of computer usage.
Well, actually, one of our graduates, actually, a young woman who went to MIT, involved with computer programming, because she coded so much and typing would do like 12-hour marathon sessions, developed some sort of disorder.
Yeah.
And I guess the doctor really never really traced it back, but basically it's kind of like wrecked her career.
Right.
That she can't do that anymore without pain.
Right.
So, and so it is very important.
Start building awareness early.
Okay.
I think that's all I have.
Okay, so getting into the ones for the second reading. Most of, let me see if I have it. Most of these, we had changes for our last, from the last meeting, and also things where it was more of style, just things being capitalized. Let me just go through here and see the... All right. I'm trying to remember the, all the clarifications and also the recent changes. In the wellness policy, I think it went, was basically all these changes we had before. We had seen, we clarified the grade level from elementary school to saying K, grades K through 3, same with the secondary. The major change on this administrative regulation is dealing with celebrations. So we deleted a whole section of celebrations and put in two new paragraphs. As we talk to medications for students, no change from the policy from what we had talked about before. And, let me see.
I have a question on food groups. Is it breads and cereals or grains?
Depends what year you want to talk about.
Because you've got, because we've got proteins, breads, cereals, fruit, vegetables, and dairy products, so all of the, I mean, breads and cereals are grain products.
The new one is grains, yes.
Pardon?
It's a plate now, not a pyramid. It's a plate. It is grains, it is grains.
It is grains? Oh, okay.
So what do we have on there?
Breads and cereals?
Just combine that with grains.
Okay, we'll change that to grains then.
I'm really going to annoy you over the next year, aren't I?
It's, it's less than a year.
How many meetings?
Who's counting?
About 12?
I know where you're at.
School health program, no changes on the policy. Trying to see the other changes. There were some changes in when screenings were conducted. I think we may have had that before. Dismissed old students is basically the same. Injury requiring notification, same. Life threatening allergies, there was a change in procedure where... Moving back here, is, I guess the procedure had been was to give liquid Benadryl for mild reactions, and now that's taken out and basically for all mild reactions is to notify parents. And there was one, actually, I slipped over here, when we were talking about immunizations. Get back up here. I'm scrolling in through all this here. Okay. In the administrative regulation 641.1 with school health program, in the third section, we had added a line or two based on the, what do I want to say? That I guess you don't have to have a vaccination if you have religious beliefs against it. And that's the state law. Now, the comment that we received from one of the school nurses was that this is, this is state law, it's mentioned in the law, and that when any of the parents have issues with the vaccination, they always have a discussion with them. So she thought that it was somewhat redundant to have it in there. I could go either way on it, but I think it may be important to have it in there to say that that is an option. I mean, and I just pulled it right from the state law, so it's, it's not anything that's in conflict with it. It's just basically, it is being redundant, it's just repeating it. Not everybody has access to look up Mass. General Law on...
Well, they're more likely to go to our policy, so let's make it easy for them.
Yeah. So that's why I was just saying, I just wanted to bring it up, that that was a comment from her.
And with this one too, Bill, where it says required to present a physician's certificate, that you don't have to do that. It's that the parent puts it in writing.
I think it says not, because I read that a couple of times. Doesn't it say it's not required? I thought I, because I...
It says...
I had the...
Shall be required.
Says shall be required. But it doesn't have, it just has to be in writing from the parent, not from the physician.
What's, what's the, what's the name of this one?
641.1, school health program.
Oh, I see what you're saying. No child whose parent states in writing, shall be...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's the not as earlier.
I got you, yeah.
It's that, yeah. I mean, the thing was, I was worried is because I copied it right from Mass. General Law.
Yeah, no, you're right, you're right. My mistake.
No, Jamal, because I read that a couple of times too.
Yeah. I didn't read it enough times.
So, I still have a few, and I talked about this before, Bill, earlier, I still have a couple consistency things and some capitalizations, which you won't mind if I just went through and cleaned that up, made no changes to the, because I don't have to bring it back either.
Go ahead.
No, I'm at home. I don't think that's...
Basically, basically, basically is that we want to basically vote on the actual content of the policy, but be able to just change some punctuation, not punctuation, but basically capitalization through it to be consistent.
There are a few, yeah, there are a few punctuations too.
But would you like a motion?
Nobody needs to get excited.
Would you like a motion to accept the policies listed in the second reading?
Yes, I would.
I move to approve policies 532, 532.1, 530, 530.1, 641, 641.1, 641.2, 641.3, 644, 644.1, as amended by Dr. Gay for punctuation and consistent grammar, all things such.
And in addition to, of grains?
Oh, right.
In the wellness policy.
All things such.
Do I have a second? Any, any further discussion? Then all in favor?
Not so. We could just adopt this as a policy by default, but...
We are getting closer that with the ones that we brought for first read, that once we pass these at the next meeting, we'll have only 29 more policies to update.
To be within three years.
But, 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 considering we're cranking through like 10 a month, we'll have it, we'll have it done in March or April, and then you'll have, you have a year to... Yes?
My appointments only tell me at first, so...
What time?
My appointments only tell me at first, I believe.
All right, what's next on the agenda? Any citizen comments?
Yes. No, I bet you can't believe I waited so long. I could have. You went right, you went real quick and I was still writing down what I had to say, but I had to, I followed such beautiful comments and compliments from you people that it's easy for me to get up here real now, real brief. As representative of the Major Teachers Association, we solely support the increases for CPAC and MMA that they brought forward to Dr. Girardi and work in S. collaboratively to present them to you. As you present these to the town administrator, to the town Board of Selectmen, and reference, we want to support you, so don't think you have to do it alone. We are right behind you as teachers for every single assessment that we need, every single data thing we need, anything we need to get to that point to make our jobs easier. I mean, Matt did a great presentation. It couldn't have been done better by two people here. But every subject across the board at every school is doing data analysis, and everybody sees the increases and come to you and will say to you, we support every increase, we solely support the administration across the whole school district to bring you these facts. And any question you have about anything, feel free to write to any of us and we'll be right there to support you. And we appreciate your compliments tonight. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
I have one thing under citizens comment. I was asked by General Leary, just to remind everybody that winter ice cream sales come down Monday from 6:30 to 8:00 at the Green Meadow Cafeteria. So if you want to look at this, here's some more details.
Monday, 6:30.
Sorry to go before you, but I told you.
That's okay.
Okay. If there's somewhere, citizens comments, members comments or questions?
I have one. I just went out to use the bathroom and then get a drink of water and just noticed like, could you use some fresh paint in some places? Where do we have like a painting, just this little area right in here, just...
Did she turn right? Did she turn right and go down that hallway down the...
Down there. Yeah, well, and like just the, the, even just looking at like this carpet too, when you're walking across, it's got all those little like wrinkles in it that...
She got that new guy, asked him to send the kids over to paint.
The custodians, you know, the custodians definitely do minor painting.
Yeah.
Carpet, you're talking about probably more expensive capital projects.
But, I mean, do we have a regular painting schedule because there...
They usually do it in the summer.
In the summer, okay. But...
It's when, when kids are out of the building or over vacation. I mean, it all depends on what's the priority, right?
Do we have, do we have enough money in the budget for maintenance to like to keep on track of like what the regular painting schedule should, should be because, and all that, because I think...
I think the answer is no, we probably don't have enough money.
Or a painting schedule.
The other thing that we don't have quite honestly is a maintenance plan.
Or a painting schedule.
On the plan, it says this summer we're going to do that law.
Which we get back to the facilities director, which is part of what we're supposed to...
Out of the whole thing.
Part of the whole thing, okay. Okay, I just, because I do think, you know, paint doesn't tend, I know when you're talking about painting something the size, it's like much different from me painting my living room, but, but I think there is a message that kids get about, you know, if it's, if it's neat and looking sharp, I think that sends the message, you know, we expect you to be neat and look sharp.
Great, yeah.
And to, yeah, so why don't, if we could, I guess this would be look forward to the facilities director really keep an eye on some of that, because you've mentioned a couple of times budget for him, so, or her.
Yeah, there's a lot to it. I mean, there's stacking levels, what they're doing in the summer. These buildings are used seven days a week.
Right, right.
There's no extended period of time during the entire year that there aren't students, something going on in the open.
Right. We're using our resources well.
In the summer, you know, above, in all three schools, obviously, that's when all the heavy cleaning is done, you know, stripping the floors and just to do that, it's, it's a task, so, not that the other stuff shouldn't be done.
Right.
But there's got to be a plan put in place.
Yeah.
Funding.
So if there are no other comments, then...
Move to adjourn.
Yep.
Second.
All in favor?